Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the May 7th, 2015 meeting of the City of Bellingham Planning Commission. Now's the time to silence all electronic devices, cell phones, watches that beep, laptops, anything like that. Heather, would you please call a roll?
Ellis McKee?
Here.
Tom Granstad?
Here.
Garrett O'Brien?
Here.
Ali Teishi?
Here.
Steve Crooks?
Here.
Sarice Noah?
Here.
Jeff Brown?
Here. Okay, we have two sets of minutes to approve tonight. I'm going to ask to approve them separately because one of our members was absent for one of the meetings and liked to abstain. So do I have a motion to approve the April 16th minutes?
So moved.
Motion?
All second.
A second? Assuming everyone's reviewed the minutes, is there any discussion? Okay, all is in favor? Aye? Aye opposed? Okay. And the same for the 23rd minutes, the following week.
I move to accept the minutes as written.
Allen second?
Second.
Got a second and a motion? Any discussion? All is in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay. Minutes are approved. Thank you. Okay, so tonight, the purpose of our meeting is to continue our work session on the UGA boundary recommendation and our population growth projection. But before we do that, we'll have our standard public comment period. So this is an opportunity for anyone to come down to the mic and speak about anything other than the UGA boundary recommendation discussion that we've been having. So if you'd like to come talk, please come on down. You have three minutes to tell us what you think.
Eric Scott from Burchwood neighborhood, McCloud Road. Just have a few quick comments specifically on the apartments on some of the busy roads being, new apartments being built on some of the busy roads, especially overlooking the freeway. Like the big apartment complex being built, Irongate. It looks right over the freeway and even though I live on a quiet residential road now in a single-family home, it is not going to be good for me or the rest of the city to have people subjected to that kind of noise and stress. I recently read a paper about the amount of stress and health effects of freeway noise. And if those are going to be built, those type of apartments, they should be built pretty far away from the freeway, certainly not where they are. And that's Bakerview also, some giant apartment buildings looking right over Bakerview. They're no longer being built backaways. So these people are going to be subjected to, well, a double hit I have down, but many of them will be lower income and now they're going to be subjected to this very stressful noise. It would not be fair to just tell them to close their windows or wear earplugs. That's not a standard of life or quality of life you can, we can ask people to live. So I think we need to think about where these apartments are being built, if they're going to be built. Don't subject people of lower income to this kind of stressful noise. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. If anyone else would like to comment during the public comment period? Okay. Seeing no one, we'll close that and move on to our work session, which is continuance of last week's discussion. And I think we're going to start with staff presentation. Thank you.
Members of the commission, members of the community, unfortunately, we're down to one projector. And if you want to take this opportunity to move to this side for a better view, that might be helpful. I'm assured the building won't flip over if we all go to one side. Thank you. Commissioners, are you able to see the presentation? Okay. Thank you for your accommodation. Tonight's objective is for us to clarify some key issues to help frame your ongoing discussions. Consistent with your request from last week, we have reviewed cost details for the South Kitec properties to the north near Cordana and the South U Street property. And we can present that as part of our staff presentation today. We also have handouts for members of the community of our analysis. The key issue tonight before you is to identify the draft preferred alternative to bring forward on June 11th for a scheduled public hearing. As discussed previously with the planning commission, it's your prerogative to take the time you need. However, we are running into that period of time where we have an obligation to the county and the city council's process still lies ahead. Whatever you propose for hearing after a conclusion of public comment and discussion can be modified or changed. It's not locked in, but clearly it would be something that would be roughly right or a starting point for your discussion. That's what we'd suggest. So we want to take a moment and just frame where we are in the process. To clarify for all parties, we are not writing a new comprehensive plan. The requirement under growth management is not to start over with a clean slate. It's to update an existing plan, which council, planning commission members might recall was the result of many thousands of hours and hundreds and hundreds of participants being involved in. Broad stale outreach, the plan itself contains the regulatory construct for our city. It contains the hopes and desires and goals and it crafts together a fairly comprehensive vision for the future. This update is solely to address some minor changes that have occurred and to assure that any course corrections, minor course corrections can be made. As noted in prior presentations, the state requirements are fairly limited to ensure you have adequate room for population and assess your urban growth boundary, to address any changes to state law that have occurred before, and in an implementing reg, which is not part of the comprehensive plan but part of the requirement, to ensure that your critical area ordinance has been crafted with best available science. We've had a number of opportunities for folks to participate and those will continue. And as we look at the specific policies and goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan over the course of the summer and the coming year, there'll be ample opportunity for public dialogue, open houses, and broad discussion on those issues themselves. Just to clarify again, our current mix and as proposed by our existing comp plan is about 51 to 49 percent family split. That's based on the policies that are in the plan. However, there is strong guidance in the plan and in growth management to provide housing choices for all income levels, to ensure there's a range of housing opportunities and provide for an efficient use of land. We need to make sure that our strategies crafted about eight years ago are still responding to demographic shifts that have been identified, changes and some in cases, fairly profound changes in economic forces and reflective of our local vacancy rates themselves. There are a number of code changes that are associated which will be coming before this body. These are implementing regs. Both subdivision and ADUs are being explored. Subdivision to see not to increase yield but to allow for yield and ADUs to accommodate where appropriate after great public discussion within the city, that opportunity for another housing type. Concern has been raised about adequacy of affordable housing. I, like my colleagues, think we could never do enough to ensure that occurs, but I am very confident in saying that no community our size has so invested in trying to achieve the goals of affordable housing. Through both the housing levy voted by the community and HUD grants, we have achieved significant progress in construction and maintenance of existing homes and new homes. And we've retained our older housing stock itself. In addition, the first three bullets are the city programs. The fourth is the countywide housing affordability task force. The chat and chat implementations and strategies are being implemented over, have been ongoing in their implementation themselves. And we do have a very strong policy base, extraordinarily strong policy base on this in the existing comprehensive plan. We should talk a little bit about population projections. This was provided to us by the Association of Bellingham Citizens. We thank them for that work. We were asked to review if it was correct in its data and indeed, the data is correct. We would say however, that we have differing conclusions. It's been asserted that this indicates a very strong trend for decline and that might be true. What we can say is the Puget Sound, the State Office of Forecasting and Research Division of Office of Financial Management, as well as state sources, as well as our neighboring major metropolitan areas have shown a significant increase in the curve. And I would say that although it's not, we can't bank on it, we have seen increases locally in the last six months in terms of the numbers that would not support a continued decline. The degree of rise is again, up to debate. And I think at this point, we're dealing with forecasting. And there are points that support continued trend, there are points that support a change in direction. That's the matter before you. So it is not conclusive by itself. A clarification because of your subsequent discussion this evening. UGA areas that are served by our current utilities and urban services, and urban services are sewer and water and roads, there are schools and other. What I can say is that most of our urban growth areas include areas that are characterized by urban levels of development. That's how they got included in the first place. Our pipes are there. Much of the remaining UGA includes those. That's Geneva and 220 and Northern Heights. Unfortunately, costs to serve those areas more fully have grown faster than the return that would be available through annexation. And this is a conundrum that not only our city but other cities face. Many folks are dealing with a change in philosophy in terms of the extension of utilities and the notion that was provided when they were approved. In many cases, if we went back 20 years ago, it was standard city policy in many cities to extend utilities as a precursor to expand the urban area to provide more sustainable growth. The definition of sustainable has certainly changed. What I can say is times have changed and those philosophies have changed. And the issue before us this evening, as you consider possible UGA areas to be included or to be expanded to, is will their inclusion have a financial burden on the balance of the community? And is that appropriate? In looking at that, it's very important to note that there are many studies that have been developed that show that costs associated with growth further from the urban core carries as much as two and a half times the cost to the public as it does areas that are closer in. The further out you go, typically, it's more expensive to all of us. And the reason is the downstream impacts because of existing deficiencies, things that have to be upsized to deal with cumulative effect, get passed on to all of us. Developers and proponents will pay their project cost, clearly. They'll do the improvements for their project, clearly. They'll pay their fair share, which is what state law requires of those downstream issues. But cumulatively, we have to bear the other cost. And that's the analysis we'll be talking about this evening. With that, we want to refresh you on the UGA boundaries that we had proposed last week and talk about alternative G, which you directed us to prepare this evening. And I'll introduce Greg Ockett to take us through that.
Good evening, everyone. So yeah, last time we talked about alternatives A, B, and C. A and B utilizing primarily the existing boundaries that we have. And then C, adding the Kitec property to a reserve designation. Let me, here we go. We can go through them really quickly. Alternative A, which is our existing boundaries, our adopted plan, would use the mid-range population growth forecast, keep the current UGA boundary where it is, maintain South U Street in reserve. This would be addressed by our adopted capital facilities plans and the costs that are associated with development in the existing city and UGAs. And we would be revisiting level of service standards as part of the comprehensive plan update. So our standards for acres for parkland, for example, or response times for emergency services and so forth. Alternative B is exactly the same as A except that it would designate the southern half of the Kitec property there at the north end of the city as UGA reserve, holding that property in reserve for when it's needed in the future, if and when it's needed. And again, this would be addressed by our adopted capital facilities planning. And then alternative C would use the, between the mid and the high range population growth forecasts. And it would add the Kitec property to the UGA, making it eligible for annexation and urban development. And we've estimated the cost, the city cost, the public cost of serving that area with a full range of urban services to be 30 to 40 million over the 20-year, 22-year planning period. And we'll talk more about those costs in a minute. And then this is alternative D. This is the one that you specifically asked us to look at as well. This would use the high population growth forecast. It would add the, both the South U Street and the Kitec property into the UGA, making them both eligible for annexation. And the cumulative costs to the public of serving both of those areas over the next 22 years would be between 76 and 113 million as we have estimated. The financial impact analysis that we typically do with annexations is, I know, new to all of you. You don't typically see those. Annexation is a council requirement, is a council directive. Those don't come to the planning commission. So this is going to be a little bit new for you and we'll try and hit the high points for you and make it as understandable as possible. As I said, council is more used to looking at these kinds of analysis. So what we did was we used the methodology and the model that we typically use to evaluate an annexation proposal. We applied those to both the South U Street and the Kitec property. We can say in general, we know that residential development in and of itself doesn't pay for, doesn't provide enough revenue to pay for the services that are required. That's not unique to U Street or Kitec. That is what we found in general. New development pays its fair share of the costs of the improvements as Rick mentioned, but due to existing deficiencies, we're all responsible for those costs. And those are the costs that you'll see summarized in the cost benefit analysis. It includes operating costs, infrastructure costs, developer costs, and also the revenues that we can expect. So it looks at an area, a geographic area, estimates the amount of revenue that we could expect to receive through property taxes or other taxes, and then includes an analysis of the types of facilities that would be needed to serve the area. So if there are new roads that are the responsibility of the public, not the developer, those costs are included. If there is a need for a fire station, those costs are included. If there's needs for new parklands, those costs are included, both capital and then operating costs. And we're really fortunate to have on our comp plan update team, the city's finance director, Brian Henshaw. And he's really great in helping us with this stuff and he will, is here to answer questions and he can talk a little bit more about the details in the analysis itself. For the Kitec property, the key issues in the financial impact analysis include the need for a new east-west connector that would connect the property to the Slater interchange with I-5 and then points to the east. We know that there are sewer improvements that will be needed downstream of the property. So the developers would pay their fair share of the cost of those improvements, but the rest of it would be the responsibility of the public. And there's also a King Mountain reservoir that's needed that would serve really a good chunk of the north end of the city and the Kitec property. In U Street, the key issues, fire service, level of service not being able to be met because of the location of this area. It's somewhat isolated and the nearest station is quite a ways away. So we know that in order to provide an urban level of service to this area and the adjoining areas, both to the north and to the west, a new fire station would be needed. And that's typically staffed by about 13 firefighters. U Street, the southern half of U Street is not built to an urban standard. There are no sidewalks, there are no streetlights. The road curves quite dramatically in some locations. There would need to be substantial improvements made to that road. Sewer main upgrade, water reservoir and water pump. The infrastructure requirements in this area are fairly significant. For the Kitec property itself, this is just a summary to remind you, it's about 360 acres. Based on the site planning work that the property owner has done to date, it would accommodate between 800 and 875 new units. That's about 2,000 people. There's nine acres of tourist commercial zoning there where the golf course clubhouse is located and 125 to 375 new jobs. Those are the statistics, the forecasted development that the financial impact analysis uses as key inputs. For Kitec, here's the summary and again, we can get into the details. That's why Brian is here. We have capital costs for, city capital costs, 32 million for street water, sewer and parks. Operating costs of 16 to 26 million. That's police and fire and parks, staff maintaining the parks. So the estimated 20-year total cost is 30 to 40 million. And then that does include a share of that east-west connector, but that road would benefit more than just the Kitec property. And so there is some responsibility from the public, from the city, and also from the county to help pay for that road. U Street, here are the inputs into the analysis, 520 acres. There are 485 existing housing units in the area already, served by city utilities, most of them. We estimate around 430 new units could be built in the area. This map doesn't show it, but there are fairly significant chunks of city-owned parkland property in this area as well. If the estimate of 430 housing units is in the ballpark, that would accommodate about 1,000 people. And there isn't any commercial or industrial zoning in this area, so there wouldn't be any jobs assigned to the area. For U Street, for the summary of the capital costs, 32 million for street water and parks, 20 to 40 million for police, fire and parks operating costs. So the total is 46 to 72 million over that 22-year period, 20-year period. That's the end. So at this point, I think I'll ask Brian to talk about the financial impact analysis and hit the high points for you. And if you have any questions about that model, how we use it, how we came to the numbers that we did, Brian is here to help us answer those questions.
Thanks, Greg.
Oh, I think the analysis is going to be passed out right now.
Right. We have the analysis for you. We'll pass it out momentarily. Our challenge technically is the overhead's not working, but we can go over the specific numbers and folks will have copies.
I think Heather might have already given it to most of us. Is it the four sheets with the aggregate and per capita numbers?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we've got those.
All right. Good evening. Brian Henshaw, City of Bellingham Finance Department. Greg actually did a very thorough job on covering the summary of all of the financial. I'll give a couple of brief comments and then answer some questions, I guess. The first thing is this is a very high-level forecasting model. It was developed with consultants back in 2006 to try to give us potential impacts of annexations. And we also have used it down on the waterfront for the waterfront project. I continually update it for improvements as we go from suggestions as we've done annexations in the past. But again, it's a high level. It makes broad assumptions. It's not project-specific unless we had project-specific information on a development. So we use averages. The main ones on this one is going to be that it's straight-line development, straight-line absorption. So I'm not saying, you know, 100 houses in years one and two, it's whatever the 873 houses, units is over the 20-year timeframe. So a lot of high-level general assumptions. And working with Chris, I think those assumptions work fairly well at a high level in a big, large area, but there's certainly room for challenges as we talk about specific impacts or developments if they happen faster or slower than what we've forecasted in here. So again, it's very high level. There's a lot of assumptions in here based on other plans. We take all of the work that Public Works has done, both on the water and sewer and stormwater comprehensive plans, those are also 20-year planning documents. They look at the regions. Sometimes the regions align very well with the potential annexation or UGA areas and other times they exceed those areas. So a lot of the cost might be system improvements that will benefit a wider area than just one particular one that we're talking about. So keep that in mind. Oftentimes, there's improvements that go along, but on a water or sewer system, if they add a loop system, it might be a redundant system, but it is part of the infrastructure cost that would be included in here. Both of these areas have a lot of geographical challenges. For fire and police in particular, the freeway hills, limited roads add to the cost, add to the estimations of the operations. So there's a number of police officers and fire personnel either added in both of the proposals. I should call on the UGA, I guess, areas that are under discussion for tonight. And then we've given a range, a high and a low range of estimated cost based on a couple different assumptions in there too. So I guess you're just getting this right now for the first time. So if we all looked at one spreadsheet, maybe the Larrabee Springs called aggregate, that might be a place to start.
Brian, can you just clarify the difference between the aggregate and the per capita sheets, just so we know what we're looking at?
So that was used to develop a little bit of a range. The aggregate spreadsheet is based on existing level of services, in particular, fire and police for, based on the population. So as the population expands, those people will call for fire and police services. We figure out, you know, per thousand people, how many calls that would generate, and then that's the estimation used for the fire and police. Then we have added the subjective measures for geographic challenges, and that's why we would add a fire station in the U Street area for time and responses. And that is a direct cost then that's in the aggregate, and that's a $5 million fire station. So in that case, it's added direct capital charge just for that one area. Under the per capita scenario, I've taken what it costs to run the city fire and police departments now, figured what that is on a population basis, and then just apply that to the capital as the growth happens in each of the areas. The difference is, is that it takes that fire station and instead of saying, okay, U Street, all of the cost is on U Street, we say that we need X number of fire stations citywide. It works out to be this much per person and it charges that much each year of the analysis. So it gives the low range in this case and it spreads that out. The last fire station was the Deema Road Fire Station and we paid for it with a levy and a bond. All of the city people that lived in the city paid for it, not just Deema Road area or the most recent annexation. So it was an alternative method that's developed over the last couple of years when we've been doing annexations to try to attribute it as a system. Again, how many fire stations does a city need? And the thought process there is that that cost should be borne by everyone, not just necessarily the next person that moves to Bellingham. So you should have two sheets for each scenario?
They're on the back.
They're front to back. All right. So one is just a So one is just a summary sheet that gives the assumptions based on this one here. Yep, okay, great, thank you. So the top is a little bit of a disclaimer, again, just saying that it is a forecast. It's certainly not a budget. And then we talk about how many units will be developed. In this case, it's 873, so this is the Larrabee Springs annexation area or UGA area. Retail square footage, both of these don't have much retail square footage, which is one of the reasons why the cost looks so negative as far as when we analyze all of the cost and the benefits to the city. So I only put in 120,000 square feet there. On the right there is the capital cost in 2015. So you have about $6 million of parks, $10 million street. That's our portion or our share of the major east-west connector. $13.4 million of water, infrastructure, system improvements, and then $3 million of sewer. And one other caution here is that those are all in 2015. And then when we give you the net amount, it's going to be future dollars escalated for CPI, 3% basically. And then we're taking all the revenues and then all of the expenses and giving you a net number there. So if you add up all the capital and all the revenue, they're not going to equal each other. It's a net number that we gave at the very bottom. So it does include both of those. Some of the other notes of interest, I guess, is the number of police. We had two new police officers in 2016 and then another two officers in 2022, just to spread them out. Fire, we had 4.3 firefighters, which is the equivalent to get one firefighter 24/7, 365 days a year, and also one fire inspector, sorry, included in these costs. Again, there's $6 million worth of parks, and we spread that out both for the purchase, acquisition, development, and the operating costs. And I've listed the years there, 2018, 2025, and 2032. But it assumes that we would purchase up to 29.2 more acres of parkland open space in the general vicinity of this area. And then the rest is details there about the streets and the assumptions that Public Works has provided for infrastructure improvements. So any questions there on, it's a lot of information, I know, so go ahead.
Steve?
Yeah, parks and development, the 6 million there. Current greenways, three levy expires in 2016. So are you saying this entire 6 million is going to be assumed by the city without another, say, greenway for levy?
Yes, the assumption is that that would be the land necessary to meet the current level of service based on per capita and the number of acres. And it doesn't say where the revenue or where they'll be paid from, it's just giving the cost at this point.
A lot of this development obviously is going to be subject to, hopefully, some grants. What is your past experience that the city can get in grants for a project? Can you state a history, say, 5% of street water sewers might be subject to future grants, 20%? What's your experience?
I think that's a very broad question. Maybe Public Works can jump in here, too. In general, where we've been most successful is certainly in streets. And so a lot of the new streets certainly are grant-dependent, meaning that we come up with a match, but often you won't get a new street unless we have a grant. So parks has been relatively successful, but it'd be hard to put a flat percentage on there. And those are usually more on development-type grants. So at least the ones I'm familiar with, we purchased the land and then they've gone out and tried to get grants for the actual construction of the parks. But I'd hate to put a percent on it in general, so.
Go ahead, Brian, you have any idea? Yeah, for the record, Brent Baldwin, Public Works. Brian hit it right in the head. We do go after a lot of grants from the street perspective, and there is money available from state and federal agencies from the street. For this process, I wouldn't want to even guess what a percentage for you to use that as a calculation point. Sewer and water, we really don't receive many grants because that's our rate structure is put together to cover our long-term scenarios for both sewer and water. So that's fed through that process. So I think Brian was right on the task.
I think you hit upon a good question there, though. Grants, so one thing is that we have to have the plans in place, which is the first step before we can even apply for a grant. So oftentimes, that's why you'll see a project identified on our capital facilities plan or our long-range plan, even if we don't have a funding mechanism for it, because it does give us the opportunity then to try to get those grant dollars. And so that's a good plan going forward, but it's certainly not dependent. And we're finding that with all of the other federal and state budget issues, that grants are becoming less and less, and so they're turning more into loans, low-interest loans. So we have a number of grant loans, and they'll give us like 1.6 million of a grant loan, and then they forgive 500,000 of it, and then a million of it we have to pay back over 20 years. But those are usually at, you know, low-interest rates, below 2%. So we are taking advantage of that type of financing, too.
Thank you.
All right, let's see. Let's see if we can, all right.
Brian? Sorry. Quick question, sorry. Does this park cost in Larrabee particularly take into account the new park purchase that the city just made? Or is it in the process of making?
Which one?
Cordada.
In Cordada. The one that's right there on Stewart, I'm just curious.
Yeah. What it does take into account is the, it's basically half the required parkland based on the LOS, so there is 30 acres that are assumed to be adequately available currently. So yeah, it is in that.
You say it is in there?
Yes. So that's a net 30, basically. So it started at almost 60 acres, and it's down to 30 because we have 30 acres accounted for. So I'll read, I'll go through just a couple lines of this. This is a citywide profit and loss statement. It does combine things. We cannot do this accounting-wise for the city. It is, at the bottom line there is the total. But we track everything and account for everything and spend the money per fund. The city has over 50 different funds. Many have state requirements for what the monies can be spent on, and then there's also city council policy that restricts what those funds can be spent on. Greenways is a good example of a specific funding mechanism and fund that can only be spent as directed. So at the top there, you'll see, though, we are trying to take into account all revenue to the city. It has general fund there, it's property tax, sales tax, BNO tax, utility tax. That's the total revenues as they go across. Over the 20-year time period, I have $10.9 million there. And that is to take into account construction mainly in this case. So sales tax, BNO tax for all the construction that takes place. Again, we use an average cost for a median income cost for a house, and that's applied, and then absorption. So we do try to capture the turnover of that for REIT tax that comes to the city. And then below that, we have the operating expenditures for police and fire, based on the assumptions on that front page. But you'll see that salaries and benefits for police and fire are the major cost driver in this case. So you have $9.2 million of police and $14.5 million for fire. So just combining the revenues and expenses there on the operating side and the general fund, we're at about a $17 million deficit over the 20 years. The next section on there is general fund capital expenditures. This would include the parks in this case is the only capital expenditure on here, and then the police cars, I guess, are the other ones that we have on here. And that just adds to the cost side of the equation, adds to the deficit. And then the bottom half of the sheet is for all the utilities, and that's street water, sewer, and storm. They actually fare better than the general fund in this case because they have system development charges, which are specifically designed to recapture a lot of that capital cost that they have to do. And then there's also the ongoing operations of water, providing water and sewer into these areas. Currently, let's see, we don't have water service, very many accounts out there. So in other areas where we are expanding into the UGA where there's already customers hooked up, they're paying 150% of the average cost, and in this case, it would just be all new customers. Let's see, if you add all that together, then we had on this aggregate example, a deficit of the $40 million. So that's kind of the methodology that's applied to all of these. We did do it both directions. That, which is based on police and fire input, and then on the per capita example, it's just based on an average cost for what the current city is providing. And that's the only difference, and that's why it comes out to be a little bit less. We're spreading the cost. The main cost in this case is the fire station over a bigger area, so everybody would pay less in that case.
You mentioned the BNO and sales tax on the construction of the units that would go to these areas. Is there any accounting for excise tax on the sale of the homes, for sale of the units?
Yeah, that's real estate excise tax, REIT, yeah. Sorry, I gave you the abbreviation there. So that is included.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Phyllis?
One of the questions I think we had last week, to put this in a bit of perspective, what does this come down to, to the average person per household over the 20 years? I mean, these are large numbers, and they're hard to put into perspective. So if we're looking at the 40 million here and 72 million there, what are we looking at per average household for, on an annual basis? In other words, are we looking at big numbers or, you know, reasonable numbers? What are we looking at?
So I guess if you're asking what it would cost per new development in these areas, I mean, that's one calculation. But really, this is going to be spread out over the entire city. But again, it's just a forecast. So if the projects happen faster, that's going to change how much it costs. If it happens slower, it's going to change. So we didn't figure it out per person, but the current population's 83,000, so, I mean, we could do that math, but it's.
We're just sort of curious as to, you know, whether we're looking at a few hundred a year per household in taxes, or are we looking at a significant amount or a modest amount?
Rick?
Well, I guess we need a yardstick. And the issue here is that there's no additional funding source really, other than the taxes, the revenues that have been described that come in. So it just adds to liabilities. The deficiencies there just pile up on the other liabilities, and eventually, we need to find some way of remedying that. At this point, the way to remedy it is to cut other services to address these deficiencies as they become more acute. And, you know, the relative cost is, you could rebuild roads, new roads for, you know, arterial roads were about a million bucks a mile. We could rebuild all of Samish Way for the cost of, that needs to be provided to bring this area up to our level of service. And that's the trade-offs, and that's a political decision that you do as you work your way through it. The challenge we have as a community is that increasingly, as these deficiencies become more acute, we won't have the luxury of ignoring them. When things fail, like when bridges collapse, we have to rebuild them, and hopefully before they collapse. But just adding to the burden is the real issue we presented last week. That was our challenge. We don't believe, we do believe these areas, both these areas, have merit for inclusion. It's the cost issue that's the challenge for us.
So what I'm gathering then is it wouldn't automatically add to the taxes for the rest of us?
It adds to the deficiency that we're all going to eventually have to fund someday. And the way we've been doing it is, as things become more acute, more in the risk of failure, we take money away from other things to try to repair it. We do not have a comprehensive strategy to address all these deficiencies. I mean, our capital facilities plan tries to deal with the most acute ones.
Yeah, and I would just add to that, that, yeah, it's not a funding plan. So this is a forecast, and it's just a scenario that may or may not. So you have more density or less density, that's going to impact this. A lot of the projects aren't going to be built unless there is a funding mechanism, and that's why grants is an important idea there. I think Rick's saying is that the rate of this infrastructure and the improvements and even the development is somewhat dependent upon finding a mechanism in between now and then. This is a blend of all the revenues and expenses to the city, so some of this would be user rate fees. I mean, that'd be water and sewer, that would be one way. Others might be taxes or a legislative fix that hasn't happened yet, but, you know, King County got a special legislative fix for an annexation. So there's a lot of different opportunities that haven't materialized yet, but certainly opportunities that we work on to get funding, and that would speed this up or slow it down depending on how that funding happens.
Kath?
I have two questions. The first one, I just wanted to reiterate my understanding to make sure I have this straight and maybe help other people. Being in the UGA doesn't mean you're in the city. City council makes a decision to annex based on application or petition to annex, and they, at that time, look at this sort of analysis, right, to decide what the impacts will be for that annexation. Correct?
Yes.
Yes, however, one cannot apply for annexation without being in the UGA. Once one applies, it incurs a great deal of cost and time for the city.
Right. I'm going somewhere with this. So I guess the point is, the council, at the time that they're looking at a specific annexation, is going to make the decision based on the known facts at that time. What is interesting to me is that when I look at areas that are already in the city that have gone through that process, and where the council has made a decision to create the obligation to support the infrastructure for those areas, and King Mountain comes to mind, older ones like Barclay, you know, like a Barclay, you look at Bakerview area that's been pulled in fairly recently. Every time that happens, I believe the council makes a conscious decision to make that obligation to support the development in that area based on the facts of the time. So my question is, there is a question. When you have this obligation, this overhang for existing undeveloped land like King Mountain, how does the council look at taking on new obligations and creating that overhang, if you will, of demand for capital that they have to make all these budget decisions on when you have existing unbuilt property and you don't know when King Mountain specifically, when there's going to be big demand on the capital improvement fund or on some of these other things? How do you mix all this stuff together when looking at whether to have something in the UGA? And when the council makes a decision to pull in a new annexation area where they already have an obligation to support the infrastructure in existing undeveloped areas?
Well, just on the challenges that increasingly communities are finding, I could just speak to what other communities are doing, are finding that they have to be very strategic about areas they bring in and very thoughtful about the phasing for them. Many communities are beginning to do funding studies to talk about alternative means that would allow an area that's anxious to join to sort of help catch up itself. It could be everything from the special legislation in King County, which allowed for an assessment, which said, in this case, saying, everyone benefits from a fire station. Everyone who's there, even pre-existing, would pay, not just new, and that helps make the equation change significantly. That reduces a significant impediment. But we don't have that in place, although, as I mentioned last time, every legislative session, someone introduces a different way of. session, someone introduces a different way of doing annexations to try to deal with this issue. Whether we could explore ways of doing that, that would, is my best advice, because it's not just here, it's Geneva, it's other areas that need to come in, and we need to find that same solution, that same tool. So when we presented to you on U Street, we said, U Street's characterized by urban services. Those portions should come into the city. However, it's a ripeness test. We don't have that strategy in place. So we're just adding to the deficiency. And there are areas in the city, as you'll hear no doubt, that are already deficient. It's a question of, do you wish to make that deficiency greater? That's really the challenge the council will need to face. My sense is councils in other communities tend to be more supportive of these issues when some plan had been done that talks about how the area is helping raise some of the cost, so it's not dispersed on everyone. That might be a way of addressing it.
Well, I guess my concern there is, you know, I know in King County, a lot of the interest there was dealing with donut holes, you know, where you had fragments of unincorporated area where you were surrounded by three different cities and nobody was jumping for it for one reason or another. And so the, some cash was sprinkled that direction to get them to take it on, because I was actually involved in some of that stuff. So I don't see that situation happening in Bellingham. So I'm kind of really concerned about what kind of obligation the city's creating based on what we've already obligated ourselves to do for this new plan development and then looking at additional things. And I just was trying to get a feel for what the big vision of this was, realizing that you do this kind of analysis for each annexation. So that's my with me.
I have a question. You mentioned, Brian, that generally residential annexations are a net cost to the city. And that appears to be true even for undeveloped lands like Larrabee Springs. What about our industrial and commercial annexations, like when we have an area like by the airport or something that's predominantly industrial or commercial? What are the numbers? Do you guys do these numbers on those, and what do they look like?
Well, we have in the past, and they certainly look better. But I think each annexation area has challenges. And so I think to address your concerns there, to our comments too, Jeff, is that, you know, we've annexed the easy areas in Bellingham. And so the areas that are left are the already developed, the more expensive ones, either geographically, or for infrastructure, or for response. And so that's just one other consideration. Finances is certainly a major concern for the council when they look at each of these proposals, but it's not the only one. Environmental reasons or planning reasons also are considerations. There's a lot of legacy there. You have specific ones that you mentioned. There's, you know, a story with each of those proposals where we've developed, Baker View was one where we developed all around it under the old model. That model is no longer available. And so sometimes finances is just one of the considerations, and you have to look at other alternatives to do that. But it's, there's no easy answers for any of these questions on where growth is going to go.
Do those, those industrial and commercial areas ever end up in the black for the city? Like when we annexed an area near the airport, say, or like when we annexed Iron Gate? I'm just curious. I mean, are we talking like they cost us less, or they actually benefit us?
I'm trying to recall if we've actually annexed an area that just had commercial since I've been at the city, and I don't think we have. So there's always been a mix. I think if the mix is more towards industrial or commercial, it certainly helps. But I don't think we've ever had one that just says, you know, that we've had a positive gain that you can say. And a lot of that is entirely based on, again, general assumptions. So we don't have financial data before an annexation. They don't report to the city until they're actually part of the city. So a lot of my estimates are just based on similar type businesses. And there's often a big difference between what I'm assuming that business does, and it's either positive or minus on that, so.
If I could, just from King County, King County would do annexation studies as a precursor to consideration of annexation of the unincorporated areas. And all the cities were racing for commercial and industrial because it proved positive in that market.
Thank you. Jeff?
Just a footnote to that, I believe Bellingham has one of the highest BNO taxes in the state of Washington. So recall that there's property taxes, but there's also BNO taxes that you're pulling out of commercial property. So that's just, you know, everybody talks about, well, what is it, per capita, per thousand evaluation? There's a whole other dimension to that, too, in looking at commercial annexations.
One last quick one, Brian. Garrett asked about REIT in your general fund revenue calculations. And you've got BNO and sales, BNO tax, that's based on BNO tax for the commercial activity that would occur within that area. But there's, there's no accounting for the money that the people who move into these areas will spend in the general community, right? Like in these numbers, that's probably impossible to calculate, but is that, is that a revenue source that's kind of left out of the equation?
Yeah, that has come up in the past. And if someone has a good way to estimate the catchment area for sales tax, I think when I look at this, it does include, if we, if we know there's businesses there, we'll include sales and BNO tax for those type businesses. So, and BNO tax is a big revenue source for the city, one of, one of the four biggest for the general fund. So it does try to capture existing known businesses, and again, it would be an estimate because I don't have their specifics, and also BNO tax on the construction and development that will occur. The catchment area is a little bit trickier. We do, we are the regional shopping area for, at least Waukam County, we benefit from being close to the border. The Canadian shoppers are a big attribute and benefit to Bellingham. And so I think some of that is already there. And we use that both as a positive for the people in the UGA already are contributing on the tax basis, but they're also already using those. So anybody that lives in the UGA in Waukam County and elsewhere can use the parks. And so that's one, one that works both ways, I would say. But there's nothing specifically that says we would increase sales tax because now they're incorporated.
I don't have an answer to that either, so, just curious. Okay. Any other questions right now for Brian? Phyllis?
Yes. On the moving, phasing this from the, putting, putting something in a UGA does not trigger any of these expenses, would it? I mean, it's only if it's incorporated into the city that these, these expenses would be triggered. Is that, am I correct on that?
It would need to be included within the city. Placing a property within the UGA allows it to apply for annexation.
Correct. But it triggers no expenses at that point.
It does not trigger expenses till the application comes in.
Thank you.
Okay. Greg, do you have more presentation for us?
No, that's it for us.
That's it. Okay. So you have a question for Greg? Yeah.
Yeah, Greg, going back to your slide on Kitec, South Kitec, a couple of things. You made mention that there's a possible connector, Slater Road. That's the first I've heard that that's being considered. But when I say an east-west connector, I'm thinking of the Guide Meridian all the way over to Aldridge and then over to Northwest. Is Slater now targeted as an east-west connector?
I don't know that targeted is the right word. Maybe Brent can speak to this. I think that that connection, in a general sense, is in our comp plan now. We've known that there's a need for an east-west connector in that area for some time. It's a challenge because the property is outside of the city limits, so it involves multiple jurisdictions. And it's, as you can see, only a portion of it is in the, actually in the Kitec property itself. There's a stretch between Northwest and the Kitec property that's outside of the city, outside of the UGA, that would also need to be a part of the project. So, I don't know, Brent, if you have anything to add?
Sure. Just to add, real quick, we've, we have talked with Waukam County, and they, in the last year or so, have actually started looking at that as a possible connection for Slater over to the Guide Meridian as well. So there's a, there's a need in the north end of town for another east-west connection. Right now, we have Baker View, and the obvious thing is happening to Baker View. It fills up and up because it's the only way to get there. So in our comprehensive plan, there's a number of corridors that we've, we're looking at. One is Horton Road extending across to Northwest, and then Northwest up to Slater. Another is a connection up in this area, either Klein or Kelly Road, extension across through the, through the Kitec area, and then hooking up to the Slater Road interchange.
I know the neighborhood strongly supports the Kelly Road connector. And when I heard Slater, that just surprised for me, that I haven't heard that previously.
Well, and I think, I think they're one in the same, they're just being called different things. So either Kelly or Klein coming across would eventually, the thought was, would eventually meet up to Slater, because that's obviously where the interchange is with I-5, and has the most effect for the traffic circulation.
Okay. Thank you.
While we have Brian, I actually have one more question. It's Reese to give. Okay. Brent, on, for U Street, you've got a lot of water system improvement costs, and those looks like, from the image that was on the presentation, that those are like a water tower on top of the hill and some things like that, among other things. My understanding is that infrastructure is necessary to serve the portion within the city as well?
Correct.
Okay. So this came up last meeting, and I want to ask, because Brian's here, and Clayton commented on it in his written comment, but this, this concept that these infrastructure costs benefit more than just the UGA area itself, is that reflected in the per capita versus aggregate? Is that what you were kind of explaining earlier, that like, if you look at a per capita cost, for example, it's extrapolating the, the cost of that infrastructure over a greater population area, citywide effectively?
On the per capita one, the only difference between the two scenarios is based on police and fire.
Okay.
It doesn't per capitalize, that's a word, the system developments, estimates that are the water. And we had a lot of internal discussions about the projects and what to include and what not to include because of that challenge. And I think we ended up with, we listed them all out, and those are in the water comp plan, will be built as we're able to build, whether there's annexations or not, just for that reason. But it may speed up development or speed up the projects based on annexations. But they're basically needed infrastructure, and that would be an improvement that would be born. So that's the challenge with this financial model, is, is specific costs that are only attributable to a small area versus a wider benefit.
Maybe I could add just one more thing. I think part of the assumption on this, too, was, and the reason for wanting to show the numbers, was if a development came in and outpaced the city's ability to build that infrastructure, the, depending on where they develop, the infrastructure has to be in place for that development to occur. So in other words, a lot of the area of U Street has to have a, a reservoir in place in a certain location, pipes to that, pumps in certain locations, to be able to build any houses, because there isn't the water pressure there now.
So you've got a capital facilities plan that's planning for that infrastructure, but if, say, that area was put in the UGA and then annexed, and then a developer came along and wanted to build 150 lot subdivision, you would tell them that water infrastructure has to be here, and it's on you, developer, to build it for us now?
Or you can wait for us, in our process, to get to the point where we have the funding put together to put there. And keep in mind, when we did our water system plan, which is the water comprehensive plan for how the system works, so how many reservoirs we have, all that kind of good stuff, it was, it analyzed all of this area, because remember, back then, this was in the UGA, then it was taken out of the UGA. So some of that assumption into that plan for the water system assumed this area.
Okay. Thank you. Phyllis, did I trigger another question?
Actually, it was sort of on a different issue. On our alternative C, which we were given, growth forecast is in between mid and high range, and I see that the medium range is 1,235 and the high range 1,562. Do we have a number that we would attach to something that would range in between those?
Chris?
I'm trying to understand what you're asking. So are you asking what the difference between the, the population difference overall between alternatives B and C?
Well, yeah, on C, it says, the, between medium, the mid and the high range, and I'm looking at the numbers for the mid and the high range, and I was wondering, do we have a specific number, or this is just a general range?
Oh, oh, sure, yeah. Sorry. I know, I think I understand what you're asking now. Yeah, it's, so the, the, between medium and high range, the, the midrange is around 28,000 something, and the high range is just under 36,000. Alternative C assumes, again, that, that U Street stays in reserve, but that the, the north piece, that the Kitec, portion of the Kitec property is brought in. And so what, with, what that could accommodate and what our current capacity in the city and the existing UGA is, it's around 33,000. So it brings us up, we're a couple thousand short of the, a little bit more than 2,000 shy of the high range, but we're, you know, like I said, just about halfway in between the mid and the high range would be where that would, would be.
So whether these are brought in is what triggers whether we're toward the mid or to the high range on this other. In other words, you're not putting those two independent variables into the same context. You're, so whether this Kitec and the U Street is brought in is going to determine whether we're at the high or the medium range? Is that, is that what I'm gathering?
It would, it would give us the capacity for that. So, so as you can see, like, alternative C assumes just the northerly piece is brought in. So that gets us the additional 800 and some housing units, which translates to 1,500 or so people, which, you know, bumps us up from the 28,000. And then the, bringing in the Kitec and the Southeast Street gets us a little bit farther. And so that would be the, again, you're just kind of adding, like an a la carte menu sort of thing, just picking this piece and that piece together.
Thank you.
Yeah. No, Cerise?
I just have one question on, no one's really talked about alternative D. And I'm kind of curious, the pros and cons, and your opinion on that.
I think the most, to be fair, D, which includes the new area to the north, which provide housing option, which was why it's included in C, and adds in the new UGA area to the south that was formerly reserved, we really would focus on, the most significant con would be the financial impact and existing deficiencies and worsening that. The pros would be, as we've said all along, areas in U Street that are characterized by urban growth would be allowed to come into the city, where ultimately, we want to get them in there. Ultimately.
Thank you.
Steve?
Got a question as far as these population forecasts are concerned. In taking the high and projecting that 1,562 for 20 years, it still comes up deficient by 2 or 3,000. According, it comes up 31,000. And so I think you're targeting 33,000, is that correct? Taking your high range?
Are you speaking about the, the high range forecast in the Burke report is 35,900 and something, so it's just under 36,000?
Yeah, but the high recommended on the right-hand side of the population data shows the high of 1,562. For 20, for 20 years?
It's actually, yeah, the forecast, it's, we're, we're planning for 20 years, but these, these forecasts were made in 2013 with the assumption that we'd have the plan in place by 2016.
Okay.
So we have kind of a three-year window of time at the beginning of the planning period here that's actually, it's included, that three-year window is included in the forecast, but it's, it's, you see what I'm talking about? The forecast went from 2013 to 2036, so it's a 23-year. So if you take that multiplier out, multiply it by 23 from 2013, and you should get to the correct number at 2036.
Okay. Considering where we are today, 400 to 500, how long is it going to take to get up to that high number? How many years, say, from 400 to 500, to get up to the 1,500 that we are forecasting? That's, that's quite a significant difference. And if you puddle along five, six, seven years, again, watching the scale go up slowly, even the high range, it's, it's out of, it's out of whack.
And again, I think, I think that's what we're, what we were citing at the beginning was... was, recent reports from, from the State Office of Financial Management and also our recent permit data indicate that there's a change in that trend line, that we've been through a large dip, a large low spot for, for the better part of the, you know, the last five to seven years and that we're, the last few years as we're coming out of that and recent, like I said, the latest forecast we've got from the 2014 commentary from the state on that is that, that the trends are changing. Again, we, we don't know enough to say what it's going to be in 10 years, but I guess what we do know is enough to say that we're not convinced it's going to keep going down.
Well, I'm not convinced it's going down. In fact, I don't even agree with the 400. I think there's, it's a higher rate than that. But what I am concerned of targeting that high number, when it almost seems right now, when you're, when you say you're at 500 a year, that it's unrealistic and that maybe a medium number would be more realistic for this exercise.
Well, that was the staff recommendation. We, we-
The medium, the medium range.
Mid-range, yes.
Well, I, I have to think it makes some sense.
Thank you.
Chris, I think Phyllis asked this question last week or maybe midweek via email regarding the, what impact our decision on the population projection will have on the county process? So, you know, we recommended the high a year, over a year ago and through the planning commission and council process, and they adopted that as part of their multi-jurisdictional outlook, or I don't even know what the term is.
It was the multi-jurisdictional alternative.
Alternative, yeah. And, and so, what, I'd be, I'd be curious to have just a brief explanation of what that means for the county if we decide to choose a medium designation, for example, or recommend that to the council and they decide that, and then the county has to reconcile their numbers. And can you explain a little bit, like, the options they might have?
Well, yeah, I mean, they could do a couple of things. One is they could just lower the overall county-wide allocation. They could redistribute between the different urban areas, or they could push it all into the rural areas, or some combination of those. But really, these numbers that we're working with right now are, are still, you know, we're under a draft environmental impact statement and the idea is that after each of the jurisdictions has, has pondered all of this and made a recommendation back to the county, that they'll make the ultimate decision and if there is a need to rebalance at that point, they'll, they'll make those choices.
Okay, thank you.
Tom?
Yeah, I'd just like to make a comment regarding forecasting. It, it, to me, it feels like I'm being asked to drive a bus down the highway, looking only in the rearview mirror. And if that's not enough, each of the passengers is adjusting that mirror to suit themselves. So, what am I supposed to do? I don't have a periscope.
Greg, do you want to try to call that?
Was that a comment?
It was a comment, but if you want to answer it.
Well, if you look back over the last 24 years, that, so that takes into account the upswing in the early 2000s and the downswing in the last few years, we've grown by about 1,300 people per year over that 24, 25-year period. That's very close to the mid-range number of 1,235.
Do we have a, an average from, say, 1,900 to 2012, something like that? A really long range?
Really long range.
A really long range.
Yeah, we could, we could do that. It's, it would be a different geographical area that we would be dealing with, obviously. A much smaller city without any UGAs.
Yeah, but it might give me some kind of idea of a, a straight line.
The thing is, Tom, though, we really need to look forward, like, those numbers aren't going to help us, I don't think.
Yeah, but neither is, you know, a number that goes like that and then down and then back up and down.
The population's grown a lot in the last 50 years.
So, we, I think we should allow members of the public to talk and I think we have more discussion. I feel like I have a couple more questions that I'd rather wait on and we're going to try and get to a recommendation to staff tonight if we can. I mean, I think we have that obligation as a group. We've taken some time, but we should give the public an opportunity to speak. At this point, there's new information to speak about. So, I would like to offer that opportunity now and we'll open a public comment period for this. Here's what I would say. I, we've taken a lot of comment and this is just my opinion as chair. I would appreciate it if nobody comes up and repeats something they've told to us before. We've seen your written comments in that regard. We've, we've heard them in person multiple times and we have to get through this tonight. And so, I would ask that you respect that and if you have comments to provide, please try and provide us with new information or information or comment relative to this new information that we've received. And I know that might be hard to do, but I'm going to ask everyone to please do that and I'm going to limit comments to three minutes regardless. So, with that, we didn't have, did we have a sign-up sheet? I didn't, I didn't see one. One person signed up. I think we'll have a few more. So, Darcy, you're first and everyone else, please name an address for the record and you'll hear a warning bell at 32nd, or I'll give you a 30-second warning and you'll hear a beep when your time's up.
I just want to talk about Klein-Kelly.
You just wanted to slide up?
That'd be fine. Hi, my name's Darcy Jones with Jones Engineers, 4164 Meridian Street, Suite 304. I'm going to try to hit on three points quickly. I think, first of all, with regard to the fiscal impact analysis, and Phyllis, I think you really made a good point. With regard to the Kai-Tec property and the fiscal impact analysis we did, I think it is something that we're looking at at the time of annexation. And, and in reality, with regard specifically to the Kai-Tec property and our neighbor to the east, the Klein-Kelly area, Klein-Kelly is, is part of the UGA. They have a current petition to annex. They've been told they cannot annex until they get sewer and they need to get a sewer pump put in. They've had studies done. My point being, the Klein-Kelly annexation area would probably come in, if, if, if Kai-Tec or South Kai-Tec came into the UGA and we annex, we would, it would probably be an all-in-one deal where once, we would help solve the sewer issue for Klein-Kelly and vice versa, it'd be a cost-shearing. My point being, would it be possible to run those economic analyses, again, assuming there's 160 acres in the Klein-Kelly petition area without sewer, most of it light industrial and commercial? There's also an additional 80 acres within the city itself, within the city limits, 80 acres without sewer right now, up in that same area up there. So, you're talking 240 acres of mostly light industrial and commercial lands. I believe if you reran the economic analysis for the South Kai-Tec, you'd find significantly different results. And I believe it's a legitimate thing to do, given the status of the Klein-Kelly annexation petition right now and their need for sewer. Second item, I wanted to address a couple issues that were brought up last week with regard to density on the South Kai-Tec property. There was some testimony, Greg, you're using 360 acres. I believe that probably includes a little bit of rural lands to our east, between us and Klein-Kelly. But, you know, if you do the math, 360 acres, 830 units, that's like, that's not, doesn't sound like very good density. So, I want to address that to let you know.
About 30 seconds.
The, of that acreage up, up at Kai-Tec, half of that is in the golf course right now, the golf course itself. A significant other portion is proposed for parks, open space, commercial area. So, we're really, depending on any given neighborhood, you're looking at six to eight dwelling units per acre, I think. And that is all preliminary, but I just wanted to make that clear. That acre, that gross acreage includes a lot more than just houses. And I'm going to hit this one more time. Population projections are important and I know we need to be realistic and try to do that right, but the mix, the mix between single-family and multifamily housing, those two issues alone are, can really, really change the land capacity analysis significantly. And I know I've said that before, but I really, again, I know it's, it wasn't really a policy. I think staff, I honestly think, given the mandate of 48% of the county's growth, you have to figure out a way to make it fit and go into a significant multifamily mix seems to be the way to go, but if we adjusted that, it would have a significant difference in the land capacity.
Thanks, Darcy.
Thank you.
I'll avoid having hand raised this time. I want to start my timer, so I have a cue for myself. My name's Isaac, I'm from Happy Valley and I am wanting to look at the mobility options in these areas because it looks like we're going to have Slater Road and Meridian as being the only two connectors, plus maybe Cordada Parkway heading up into that Kai-Tec area, which means we have basically two roads for 2,000 people. And then, when we're looking at U Street, we already have 1,000 people there, we're, we would be adding another 1,000 people to that area and it's only serviced by one road. I'm wanting to question how that will impact pedestrian safety, traffic, mobility options and the speed of public transit through that area if they get enough residents for public transit. And also, what does it cost to support that suburban sprawl? Because it's very well-known that cul-de-sacs and dead ends and streets that don't have connectability significantly increase costs. For instance, if you have a sewer pipe that has to dead-end, that, every time that pipe has to get replaced, it can't connect to any other pipes, it deadends there, or a garbage truck that has to turn around. And so, what I'm hoping is that we can have the foresight to at least put in easements, not build roads, but put in easements for future roads in a grid of urban block size so that there can be connections for the future and so that we don't have to spend millions of dollars later on to provide those connections. Thank you.
Thank you.
Keith Howard, 4680 North King Mountain Road. I just want to, Darcy touched on some of the things I was going to touch on, but I wanted to support the Kai-Tec UG area because it gives the city a good opportunity to start out with something with no, no existing houses in there, so there's very little opposition. You've got the opportunity to, to design it the way you want to, the most efficient with traffic in mind and everything. And they'll need to put in a pump station and what that will do is activate sewer line down the guide, which will bring in the, the 240 acres that Darcy was talking about. And I'm part of the Horton to Kelly Road annexation, kind of been leading that. And my experience with the annexation process is, you guys really don't need to worry about expenses to the city because all we get is the city says, they're not going to pay for anything, we need to do all of the improvements to get annexed. And I, that's fine with me. I mean, I can understand that because of all the concern about spending money, but with, with Kai-Tec coming in, you've got the same opportunity, when, when they go to get annexed, you can demand whatever you want from them. And one of the things would be this pump station, which would bring in 240 acres of light industrial and commercial property, and I don't understand how that can't be a moneymaker for the city. The, the police services are there, the, the fire coverage is there, it's all commercial and light industrial, so there's no schools need to be built. It's just, there's very little, very little cost to the city in that and it's going to be nothing but revenue. And it seems like a good opportunity in the planning process to, to expand the footprint of City of Bellingham, very little, but yet make another 240 acres of property that's in the UGA or currently in the city, developable. I mean, you can put it on your inventory then, you know, with, with any conscious, you can't put it on your inventory now because it's not going to get developed. And I, I kind of, I don't understand why, and I kind of understand, but you, you questioned how much it would cost when this stuff went into the UGA and they said zero, but yet on all these slides, it all, that one there says 76 to 113 million would be the cost of annex-
About 30 seconds, Keith.
The, the other thing on that area, that 240 acres, the guide was, just went through a major upgrade, so there's not a traffic impact. And I just think that by bringing this area in, you'd bring in a lot of inventory into, into developable property that would, would provide a lot of tax revenues to help pay for the deficiencies in other parts of the city. Thanks.
Thank you.
Sorry. Alex Weinstra, I'm the builder for Kai-Tec, so please look past my obvious bias. We've been building next door at the former reserve at Cordada there. Started around three years ago, started kind of slow, market was down more. Last week, we, and we had 126, I believe, 126 houses to build when Kai-Tec got that property from D.R. Horton. Pulled the 126 permit last week, got an offer on it today. Really have nothing there left available. So, and I believe, you know, we've been a good, affordable alternative in the area here. Good mix of people who moved in there, a lot of them really like being near the services of the medical services nearby and such. I've been blessed working with Kai-Tec, they've been a good steward. We're working on the next phase, which should start in June, Phase 1A, right below the annexed potential area there, not annexed, UGA, I'm sorry. And the next phase, we're going to do as the first county's Built Green community and make it Energy Star, it's been important to the owner. I'd like to also point out, you know, I think Kai-Tec's been a good steward, maybe a little bit in contrast with D.R. Horton. When D.R. Horton was building in there, you'd see a lot of vans coming in from counties to the south of us by quite a ways. All our vendors are here in local and the money we pay them stays here in the county. Just in general, they've been a great partner, they've been honorable and, you know, I think, well, people that basically haven't, you know, I meet a lot with the buyers or the people looking. If they don't buy there, it seems like they're forced to go out in the county somewhere to try to get something more affordable, basically. So, if you want to send them out to the county somewhere, that's another option. Anyway, thank you. Have a good day.
Thank you, Alex.
Can I use this again? Awesome.
Send you a bill.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, we do. Yes, we do.
Big ones.
Hello, my name's Clayton Petrie and I wanted to talk to you about some of the capital facilities issues that you've been discussing. One of the first ones is there's a policy 2U-11 that was adopted by the city and the county together. And it says that if the city doesn't start the process to annex Geneva and Hillsdale by 2012, December 2012, then it should be removed from the UGA. Those are extremely expensive areas to annex and, you know, I think you should contemplate removing those from the UGA to help balance these other area costs. And you might end up actually with a net positive in how much money the city will be contemplating spending on its annexation of the entire UGA. Same thing goes with the Dewey Valley. Just add those together and if you took those out, it would probably cover both the northern and southern areas that you're contemplating right now. Mr. Baldwin mentioned that- Baldwin mentioned that their planning already includes the UGA reserve. And I also wanted to show, one of the other members of the public mentioned, you know, dead ends and things like that. Well, in the U Street area, there's already planning for roads to go through there. It's not going to be some sort of cul-de-sac dead end area. And it actually provides the access to the infill that you're planning already in the city. It helps improve fire service delivery. I sent you some information on the problems on the, you know, where Bellingham probably needs to build a fire station in that area, whether or not the U Street reserve comes in for either the current UGA that's on U Street and also for the people that are not getting the LOS service that they're paying for now. You know, I think that's, you know, the mapping showed, you know, they're really not in the city getting very close to the LOS service that people are paying for. The other thing I wanted to mention is that the police LOS is based on calls, according to the Comprehensive Plan Language. And there's a chart in there that shows that the U Street reserve and the current UGA areas have very, very, very low numbers of calls for service. And you can read that in your own comp plan. It's already adopted into there because the reserve is intimately intertwined with the planning already that's in the comp plan. They just, they haven't removed it. They haven't updated the plan since it was removed. And then the last thing I wanted to mention is there is a, you asked about a profitable development analysis. This is a City of Bellingham, one done, and over 15 years, this one profits the city nineteen thousand, four hundred and something thousand dollars. So you might want to look at that. It's from September 29, 2008. They actually annexed that part of the city. You know, nineteen million bucks, 15 years, same sort of analysis done to encourage an annexation. And so there are positives. You've just got to look for them. And thank you. If you have any questions, feel free to email or call me.
Thank you, Clayton.
Hello, I'm Jim Hanson. I live on Kiesling Street in the Columbia neighborhood. I'm sorry to disappoint anybody that I don't have a lot of high technical arguments and research. I'm just a citizen and a taxpayer. I'm also, as a semi-retired and partial small-scale developer in the City of Bellingham. And I favor infill, but I favor smart infill that doesn't disrupt rural areas and doesn't disrupt the neighborhood characters, character of the neighborhoods. There've been analysis of this Burke report that's found serious statistical flaws in the projections. I favor the low projection, which hasn't been much discussed here tonight. I would favor the UGA expansions to accommodate the low projection. I say that particularly as a taxpayer. There's quite a burden of taxes and also on people who are trying to develop in the city. The impact fees, while I support them, and them being fair, they come up to 29% of the cost of a lot that I've developed. And to have those going along with my taxes to do unnecessary expansion of UGAs and annexations kind of rubs me wrong. So I would like to see us be really careful, and I would really suggest that you look more carefully at the low projection. So one other thing is I appreciated hearing that we aren't somehow obligated to take on a higher-than-realistic growth projection just to accommodate or to enable the county to abdicate its responsibilities to control unnecessary growth in the rural areas. I think we can take care of our business, and we should expect the county to take care of their business. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Bob Carmichael, 1700 D Street. I will start by stating the obvious, that it's a tall order to ask you to come up with a recommendation tonight based on information as dense as you've just received it for the very first time. And I would, while I have no authority, obviously, you're the Planning Commission, and it seems to me you have the authority to decide when you make the decision. And I would suggest that you haven't been given sufficient time to make this decision. There's been a lot of points raised by people, essentially back-of-the-envelope sorts of points, without having looked at this information. We've been paying a consultant to look at these things, and we haven't had anything to give him until tonight to look at, and we would like to have the opportunity to have that reviewed. I did a quick back-of-the-envelope calculation, and again, this is, for what it's worth, sort of off the cuff, and I'm not an economist. Is it going to cut into my three minutes?
No, sir. We are, as announced earlier in the meeting, the scheduled hearing on this would be June 11th.
Understood.
And no recommendation is coming forward, just what to prepare for that hearing. And as stated in the staff report, it could be a hearing on a proposal that could be altered subsequently. So there's more than adequate time to respond to the materials provided tonight.
I understand there's time for us. My concern is that the Planning Commission was being asked to identify an alternative to put forward as a recommended alternative for public hearing. And that's what my comment was. We will have additional time, but you might want to have some more time to address the issues to your satisfaction or have the information presented to your satisfaction before you identify a recommended alternative. But back to my back-of-the-envelope, 40 million, which seems to be the worst case over 20 years, to the commissioner here, asked what's a sort of a big-picture number that that could mean. If there's 83,000 people, I heard somebody say in Bellingham, that's $481 a person divided by 20 years is $24 a year, divided by 12 is $2 per month per person. And that's over 20 years. There's some things in this 40 million, which again is the worst-case high-end estimate, that are capital expenses which would be benefiting the city for years. For example, parks. A park is going to have a lifetime much longer than 20 years. So it's going to be benefiting the city for a much longer period of time than that. There's a lot of different things that could be looked at here to try to determine what, you know, what the real cost is. And it depends over what time period you're looking at that real cost. Water and sewer, similarly, those, the life expectancy of a water and sewer line is much longer than 20 years, as you all know.
Thirty seconds, Bob.
I'm sorry, what?
About thirty seconds.
Thank you. So, I mean, there's a number of things here that you could be, could be looking at and should be looking at. And Mr. Henshaw, who I have a tremendous amount of respect for, he does a great job. He is the first to tell you that this is a very high-level analysis, 100,000-foot level, and it's not specific to a piece of property. It's a model that the city has. And so there's a lot of things that we could talk about that really we haven't had the opportunity to yet, and I think you should hear as well. The final thing I want to point out, and I'll circle back to a growth management point, which is, under the Growth Management Act, there's a lot of things that you're charged with considering in your decision as a planning commissioner and the city council as well. One of those is not making up financial deficiencies. You're supposed to accommodate population. You're supposed to guard against sprawl. You're supposed to look at the environment. There's all kinds of things you look at. And of course, there's a financial component to that. But that's not what should be driving your decision. You should be looking at what are the real needs of the community, what's the likely demand with people moving in here, and how do you accommodate it? Thank you.
Thank you.
Patrick McKee, Grant Street in Bellingham. I have heard tonight there is some uncertainty as to what the population projections should be. The Associated Citizens of Bellingham have given you OFM figures for average yearly growth from 1968 until present. So you can see what the OFM figures show for that period of time. And in recent years, the average population growth has been trending down, as has been said here tonight. But then now I hear OFM is saying that, well, permits or something indicates that the population may be starting to perk up again. But it sounds very uncertain to me, and I think this calls for a cautionary approach on your part. And what I'm asking you to do is take the low figure that either Burke offers you or the Office of Financial Planning offers you. Take the low figure to start out with. I believe the city has told you that within the current city limits, they've done a land analysis, and I believe the figure, we can absorb about 28,000 people within the current city limits without even going out into the growth areas, the urban growth areas. I think that was the figure I heard. The point I'm trying to make is we have a considerable amount that we can absorb within the current city limits. Why not focus first on putting population into the current city limits, getting all of the infrastructure that we need within the city? I believe Commissioner Brown said there were some annexations where we still haven't put in all of the infrastructure that's necessary within what we have already annexed into the city. So why not take a go-slow approach? We have time. We have ability to absorb population. And then in six years, when you have to tweak this again, if it appears that you've accepted too low a population figure, then you can adjust it. And you may have to phase in some of the UGA areas. But why not take a wise, cautionary approach to this? And that's what I'm asking you to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick.
I am Christopher Granis, checking on a drive. One of the things that Mr. Carmichael said is that there is a whole lot that hasn't been talked about but is relevant to whether or not, or what kind of a growth forecast is chosen. One of them is, well, what kind of a city do we want it to look like in the future? I have said that, Ally, sorry, before, but I haven't talked much, I haven't talked about public transit. I learned from the Planning Academy put on by Tim Stewart several years ago that a vibrant urban city requires an effective transit system, which can only happen if you have a dense urban core. And to expand the UGAs, which really it is sprawl, to promote sprawl is to make effective urban transit very difficult and very expensive. It can only work if it's subsidized. That's one of the sorts of things that I haven't heard talked about. Another one is the environmental impact. For instance, Lake Patton is already under environmental stress. To add the U Street area into the UGA and eventually into the city would be really hard on the environment of Lake Patton and everything downstream. So I'm kind of disappointed that the, there's been so much discussion about whether or not to enlarge the UGAs and little-to-no discussion about where do we want to go with the City of Bellingham. I would urge you to, and keep in mind, the forecast possibilities are so wide, we really don't know what's going to happen in the future. The trend has been down in the last several years. Fourteen is half the number of people who would be in the lowest forecast provided by Burke. I would urge that you recommend a low growth forecast. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Eric Scott from Birchwood Neighborhood again. I just had a question for the Planning Department. I was curious about where the new job estimates came from, those numbers. Not to sound like I'm alleging they're made up or anything, I'm sure they came from somewhere, and I'm assuming they're not the temporary construction jobs. I'm assuming they're more of a long-term projection of the jobs. So I'd be curious where those numbers came from and what percentage of living wage income are those jobs, if they have any estimate? Do they have businesses lined up, entrepreneurs lined up to actually create those jobs? Tell me if this phrase is correct. I think it's jobs are the golden goose. Is that right? So it'd be nice if we could allocate, disallocate jobs on paper and that were to materialize. So I'm curious as to how realistic that is. Thank you.
Thank you. Staff, do you want to respond to that question or just wait? You bet.
Good evening. My name is Steve James. I live on Undying Street in Bellingham. And just a short disclaimer, I'm on the Puget Neighborhood Association Board, but I'm here speaking to you as a citizen of Bellingham. Have no affiliation with the association on this. And as a citizen, I've been closely following the comp plan process. Some of you have seen me at a lot of meetings. I've attended the open houses. I've actually read most of what the comp plan says. Can't say that I've read it all. And I have a lot of notes here that I was going to talk about, but staff and others have really said a lot of things I wanted to say, but there was a couple of points I did want to address. You know, first of all, I'm not a no-growth proponent. I think growth needs to happen, but I think we need smart growth, and we need to define what smart growth is. And I think you're hearing some reasons of that or some examples of that from what people are saying. Growth that doesn't degrade neighborhoods, you know, growth that doesn't, you know, lower our quality of life here, growth that makes us an attractive city, not an unattractive city. And there are ways of doing that. But the meeting tonight, and I want to commend the commissioners, asked some questions you just, I decided to go to rather than all these notes because most everything else has been addressed. And I really appreciate the question of why are we talking about expanding urban areas, urban growth areas, when we already have areas that we've brought into the city in urban growth area and we haven't developed yet, and we're accumulating a burden every time we do this? Why are we accumulating more burden? If I hear staff correctly, what we've been doing, the city's been doing, we, and I consider when I say we, we the collective city, is we've been deferring things in order to accommodate growth, and we can't keep doing that. We can't keep deferring, you know, our roads, all the other things that need to be done to accommodate growth. Those costs are going to have to be met. I think staff pointed that out, and I have to ask, you know, why are we want to accumulate more? Let's try and take care of what we have first and then find a way. The other one is the chart that was presented by the Association of Bellingham Citizens, which I am a member, I think tells a very good story and it answers one of the questions that was asked by the commissioners. You know, what can we expect in the way of growth? Well, the story told of that, if you look at the timeline, was the development of cheap and easy property in Bellingham from the 60s through to the 90s. It was cheap to buy property here. It was easy to develop, and it was flat. We could expand out and move. Those days are gone. There's no more cheap, easy land left. And to expect that level of growth that occurred from the 60s to the 90 to occur again, while there may be a slight uptick, to think that we're going to have 1,600 people trying to move into this area, we can accommodate 1,600 when there's no easy developing land without sprawl, and we, I don't think anybody here wants sprawl, is just not real. So the chart speaks for itself. And I thank you for your time, and I thank you for your considerations.
Thank you, Steve.
Anne Mackey, and I live on Humble in New York neighborhood. I support selection of the low population number for Bellingham because, first, I think it best supports what I believe is our community's desired livability standards and our sustainable capacity. And secondly, I support this lower projected number because I believe it's historically consistent with the growth pattern that we've seen. It concerns me that we've had serious criticism of this Burke report, yet there's been no debate about that openly and here in the meetings. I'd be curious to know why the staff is continuing to stand by a report that's really been thoroughly discredited in some of the public comments and letters that you have received, especially from another person here in the community who's a teacher of population biology, John McLaughlin. And I read his letter in the packet, and I thought, I was anxious to hear the staff or commissioners discuss that openly, you know, the criticism that it's received, but we haven't heard that. we haven't heard that. I'm confused by the process to a certain degree that we're discussing here tonight, which roads are connectors in the UGA, when we really haven't talked about the population number itself. It seems to me that we're missing the key assignment. The key assignment is what population number do we as a community want to embrace? Are we already accommodating our citizens that live here now with the public services that are going to be needed for this additional population growth? I don't think we are. I've been hearing for a few years now that our police is understaffed. And I believe that's true. I, I've watched the Parks Department cut its budget significantly and its services to our neighborhood parks. So I believe that we're struggling with, you know, providing services at an adequate level already with the population that we have. And I'm not a no-growth person. I'm not somebody that's anti-infill. I actually live in one of the densest neighborhoods in the city and when you have the slide up there tonight of that proportion of sort of fifty-fifty, fifty percent multifamily, fifty percent single family, our neighborhood is fifty percent homeowners, fifty percent rentals. I really know what it means to live in a highly dense and infilled neighborhood. It was platted in the eighteen nineties and pretty much built out by the nineteen twenties and thirties. We still have blocks that do not have sidewalks. They do not have sidewalks because we are told the funds don't exist to put those sidewalks in. And this is sidewalk along a bus route, a block from a five-story, high-rise, low-income housing unit with people in wheelchairs and people trying to move about that neighborhood and yet we can't get sidewalks. Thank you. I'm also concerned about the process. I've become pretty fascinated by the comprehensive plan, UGA process that other cities are using and have put into place because I want to know how do they involve the public? And I'm really concerned that we don't have an unbiased cross-section of our citizens that are, you know, sitting on the planning commission. And I think it's, it's one of our shortcomings that may come back to haunt us as we look at how well we have done this public process. So thank you very much and those are my concerns.
Thanks, Anne.
Perry Eskridge, Wachem County Association of Realtors, three three one seven Northwest They always say as an attorney, never ask the question you don't know the answer to, but I'm going to kind of go out on a limb here tonight with some historic knowledge that I have. One of the big things for the Realtors is that people should be able to live where they work. I live in Ferndale because I came from Montana and I like that small-town atmosphere. When we moved here, my commute to the city of Bellingham around about fifteen minutes. And now if I can get into town in less than a half hour, I consider it a really good day. I wanted to point something out about these population projections because talking to my neighbors that are moving out to Ferndale, the question usually comes in, if you could live in Bellingham, would you live in Bellingham? And the answer is always, usually, yes. And so my question is, are the people not moving here because they don't want to live here or are they moving here because they can't? Or are they not moving to Bellingham because they can't live here? And something I want to point out on this chart that I think is really, really important is if you go to about the two thousand and three year, that's when Bellingham stopped extending services out to the UGA. And if my, here's where I get into the part where I don't know the answer to the question I'm asking. If you take the historical capture of the population that moved to Wachem County, the people who wanted to live where they worked, because we are the employment center in Bellingham, my suspicion is, is that that historical capture up to about two thousand and three is going to be where we usually saw it, somewhere around forty, forty-five percent. Starting in two thousand and three though, when the city made the decision to not extend services out to the UGA, look at the precipitous fall that comes after that. That's because people no longer had the supply of land to build the homes where they could live. And I can tell you that last number there on that chart approximates the number of people who last year moved in across the street from me in a brand-new development in Ferndale. If you project Ferndale and Linden's rates of growth, you're going to see sort of a gently sloping curve up that almost intersects those numbers that Bellingham is taking. That, commission numbers, is the dictionary definition of sprawl. The next point I would like to make is no matter what we do, we can't abrogate the law of supply and demand. Can't legislate it away. It is what it's going to be. People want to live in the Bellingham area. When, if you don't add more land to the supply, then the cost is going to go up. And, and something I was talking to my Realtors about yesterday, lot prices right now in Bellingham are running about a hundred and forty thousand dollars. Let's talk about, thanks. Let's talk about affordable housing. The general rule is a family's income multiplied by three is about the price of the house they can afford. Median income in Bellingham, Wachem County, generally about fifty-some thousand dollars. Multiplied by that three, a hundred and fifty thousand dollar home. If you're paying a hundred and forty thousand dollars for a lot, where's your affordable housing? It's gone. The other thing I want to point out, just as a, wrap it up, twenty Realtors sitting around a room yesterday, we were going through a whole bunch of survey questions representing several hundred clients. The number of condominiums that are currently being asked for by those several hundred people? Two. Two. Thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, Cal Lindstra, you're probably getting sick of seeing me. I'm getting kind of sick of coming here, actually. Yeah, State Street, Bellingham. I just wanted to say that I want to know if I'm paying for that three point two million dollars the city just spent in Cordada over there for twenty-one odd acres. And if I am, I'm just wondering if the city would, since I've paid for some parks over there on the south side and we're surrounded by parks and parks are very, very expensive to acquire and maintain and we have parks all around us, if we could get the city to keep things on a level keel, spring for a fire station over there on U Street since Cordada has a twenty-one acre park over there. On facilities, I just wanted to mention that we did build that tower up there on Sam East Highlands and it does serve other people besides Sam East Highlands. And we put that in at our expense. And now we're faced with a situation where we can't even get water from our own tower that we built at our cost. Not only that, but we offered to build a tower on our property for about two million bucks up there on Sam East Highlands that would serve the whole area. The city got some sort of a grant five, six, seven years ago for about six million bucks and nothing ever came of that and they decided, no, they wouldn't have us build a tower either. So there was the money there, there was the money to service the area, just didn't get done. When we were talking about population figures, I think, just heard today from the National Association of Realtors, that these foreclosures that happened now, many of them are about seven years old. And you live in purgatory if you're foreclosed upon or if you do a short sale. And those people now are coming out of purgatory, let's say, and there's a million of them, a million of them coming up in two sixteen and for a number of years, five, six years in the very, very near future. So I, I think our population projections, if anything, are on the low side. Let's see. Oh, Perry covered that part I was going to cover. But I think Brian, or maybe it was Greg, said that cost increase is a function of the distance from the city. And I was thinking, wouldn't U Street be better compared to say north of Cordada because we're a lot closer to the city core, we're closer to Ferry Haven, we're closer to everything and we don't have the guide meridian to put up with. So that would be a consideration, I think.
About thirty seconds, Cal.
Pardon me?
About thirty seconds.
Wow, that goes fast.
It does.
Okay, and Lake Patton was mentioned, well, it's not the development around Lake Patton. It was discovered by our own Darcy over here at Jones Engineers that the pollution of the fish in Lake Patton was a result of the hatchery over there in Wachem Falls Park and not the result of, of any development in that area. In fact, the, the Lake Patton people made their own study and surprised themselves with the conclusion that there's not much wrong with Lake Patton. And if there is anything wrong with it, it's the result of the golf course the city owns and the dog run that is adjacent to the park. And the other headline that I just read today was get ready for the millennials because they're a-coming. So we need to have a higher population number and use that. Also, I meant to hand out this thing on the school last time and I forgot, so I'd like to do it now. Thank you.
Thank you, Cal.
I wanted to talk mostly about the projection that you're probably going to pick. But first, I wanted to say, I, I do hope you go back and revisit and perhaps pick a lower or even the lowest projection possibly. Many reasons to do that, but not the least of which is I don't think the city councils hope that this would help prevent the county from accepting more dwellings out in the unincorporated and non-UGA areas. There's no mechanism to expect this couns, county to do that and I don't think the city can force the county to do that. But whatever projection you do pick, I, I did want to focus on a couple of quick things. First, I'd like to agree with Perry Eskridge that we, we do have a big affordability problem when the median income is only somewhere around fifty to sixty thousand dollars. That means half the population has income less than that, right? It's the median income, so the other half has incomes less than that number and many, many people much less than that number. So the house they can afford to rent and they're not even thinking about buying is much less than a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It's not available on the market. So I want to disagree with Perry about this issue that supply and demand always works. Supply and demand doesn't work unless you have cash or you can get a loan and the income to pay the loan. So for over half of the population that lives and works in Bellingham, they're not in the market to buy a house or a condominium because there's no supply. There may be, there's a demand, there's a huge demand for people who can afford three hundred dollars a month for rent, five hundred dollars a month for rent, but there's no supply being delivered for that, whereas the supply and demand system, it doesn't work if the system can't at least break even as a builder, land speculator, developer, Realtor. If you can't at least break even and make a little bit of money, you're not going to build rentals that go for three hundred dollars a month. So there needs to be a public-private partnership and we have a bit of that in this city, thank goodness, but not nearly enough. I mentioned and I'll repeat something I did mention before, if you expect seventeen thousand plus additional dwellings over the next twenty years, almost a thousand additional dwellings per year, the demographics say that at least half of those need to be affordable at the median income or below. So that's four hundred homes or more per year that need to be affordable at the median income or well below the median income. So affordable for five hundred dollars, three hundred dollars, we have to figure out how to make that happen.
About thirty seconds, Paul.
And then I wanted to say thank you to commission and staff for taking a look at this kind of information and maybe it's off by ten or twenty percent and, and other, others who are economists, not myself, can see if the numbers need to be refined. But look at those numbers. It's, it's amazing. These unincorporated areas, if they become UGA and the subsidies that are required per year. You asked, what does that work out to be for the average person? So for the average household that gets to live in one of these new single-family dwellings, subsidy per year ranges from almost three thousand dollars a year per dwelling to over four thousand dollars per year per dwelling for each of the twenty years for both of those UGA areas, based on what the city's going to lose, the community's going to have to subsidize. So you know I work in affordable housing all the time and we're always looking for subsidy, but I didn't know we could find subsidy like that for single-family dwellings. Thanks.
Thanks, Paul.
This one? Don't start the clock.
I won't.
This thing doesn't fit. That's right. Larry Horowitz, I want to talk about the GMA. So, and I'm going to run through this really fast because I got a bunch. This is one of the RCWs in the GMA. Talks about public participation. I've made it a little bit larger and I want to focus on two things. In order for you to comply with the GMA, you've got to provide a, you have to have a provision for open discussion, not three minutes at the mic and a consideration and response to public comments. I know you're receiving the comments, but we're not hearing much consideration or response to them. This is my letter to Ali Taishi on April twenty-fifth. In it, I requested that we have a venue for genuine open discussion and a comment tracker to prove that you're really considering our comments. I'm still waiting for a response, but I'd love to hear one. This comes from our comp plan. You can see basically where it's coming from. It's going to be hard to read that. A little bit easier. Talks about the Growth Management Act that requires reasonable public notice and early continuous participation. And the purpose for that is so that you gather what our informed consent is about our goals and policies. My informed consent is a low population forecast. I think you've heard that a number of times. To answer the question about what happened in the county, if you did a county graph just like this, it would look exactly like this. You're not going to see spikes for Ferndale and Linden. The county graph looks exactly like this graph, the same downward trend. If you really want to know the community's informed consent, go to the city's website. You can either type in resident surveys, there's four of them, they're scientific, unlike the one that was done for this comp plan, which was basically just, you go online and you could do it a hundred times. Why don't you look at these four surveys and get a feel for what the people have been telling you? These have all been done since the last comp plan update. I'll save you a little time. This was one of the questions in those surveys. What's the biggest problem? This was the highest response rate of all the questions that were asked. These are the highest responses, growing too large, overpopulated. This does not, this does not support an informed consent for a high population forecast or a medium one. That's all low.
About thirty seconds, Larry.
Bellingham's going too fast, losing its character? I want to ask a question to Brian. Those analyses that you perform, does it talk about the subsidies we provide for schools? I know the city doesn't have to pay for it, but don't the taxpayers have to pay for it? Does it show the subsidies we have to pay for jails, libraries, museums, government buildings, all those capital facilities that the taxpayers will have to pay for? Where are they on your charts? Haven't seen it. Just a reminder, my informed consent is for the low. I think that you need to figure out what the informed consent is of the public.
Thank you, Larry.
As the GMA requires.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak at this time? Looks like that's kind of, kind of everybody. I think at this point we'll close the opportunity of public comment and then, looks like Rick, you and staff might like to respond to some of these comments. That's totally acceptable. And I think, yeah, I think maybe, can we take a break first?
But I'm all wound up. Yeah, of course.
Okay. It, I'd like to take a real brief break. It's nine fifteen on my clock. It's nine fifteen on my clock. Is it clock fast?
The clock's never right.
Yeah. Okay, we're just gonna take a five-minute break. Is that okay? Commission? Okay, yeah, okay. We'll take a quick five-minute break. Nine twenty, we'll be back. Oh, it's a body of eagles. My gavel. Okay, everybody, we're gonna get started again. If you're gonna hang out, please take your seats.
I've got a few things first, so I'll just ask you.
Just let me know when you're ready.
Sure will.
Okay, so appreciate the public comment and also the earlier presentation. I think what we'll do is have staff respond to some of that comment, and then the commission can, uh, reengage in some deliberations and questions if we have them. So Rick, you wanna take it away?
Okay, if I can, just to respond to a couple of comments raised, and we can provide some information on that. I'll leave the comment on population projection to the end. But what I will say is, comment was raised of asking where we wish to go as a community. That's our adopted comprehensive plan. This is not a opportunity to revise the entire plan. That is the existing blueprint. GMA states that categorically, this is not, uh, this is a mid-course correction to deal with minor issues, not revision the plan. So I think, um, if one reads our current comp plan and says it no longer reflects the aspirations of the community, that's an issue, but I think that's the discussion that needs to be forthcoming and will be forthcoming this summer. In terms of the job estimates, I'll ask Chris Behe to step up to the podium to talk about the methodology that's used on that.
Thank you.
So I'm just gonna walk you through the basics of what's in the, the forecast for employment for Bellingham, and also it's done for the entire county. What Burke looked at was past employment rates. And what you see here is, uh, the dashed line is Washington State and the solid line is Watkins County from nineteen ninety through, um, there's two thousand and ten and twenty thirteen is the tail end of the graph here. And, um, so they looked at that rate and figured out kind of what the historic trend was, and it's a slightly decreasing historic trend in recent years with forty-six percent countywide employment, so forty-six percent of the countywide total population would be actually in the workforce, uh, going forward, is what the, the, uh, trend showed. And so that's the assumption going forward. And then, based on the, uh, the allocation of population to each urban growth area, there is some additional detail that gives the percentage of commercial, retail, and industrial employment that will be in each jurisdiction. You can see, as has been said many times, Bellingham is, of course, the primary employer in the county. And so we have, um, currently, uh, in, well, this is two thousand and ten data, but it's, it's, uh, the most recent we have for a countywide split, sixty-seven percent of the commercial employment, seventy-two percent, uh, almost seventy-three percent of the retail, and about fifty percent of the industrial. Those all totaling up to, when you look at the aggregate, about just under sixty-four percent of the overall employment countywide. And then, again, with that assumption that forty-six percent of the population going forward would be in the current workforce, you get the numbers for both, uh, this is the, the low projection. Uh, again, Bellingham being the, the top line here, fourteen thousand total jobs. Again, the proportionate mix of commercial, retail, and industrial following the historic pattern. So, um, you can see that the totals there adding up to just over fourteen thousand. This is the medium projection with, uh, just over seventeen thousand five hundred total jobs, and then the mix of commercial, retail, and industrial, the fractions being exactly the same in all three of these, of these forecasts. And then you can see the, uh, the high projection, twenty-two thousand six hundred, um, just over twenty-two thousand six hundred jobs, and again, the breakout there for each type, um, overall. And then going back to our land capacity analysis, um, we haven't talked about the employment capacity as much as we have the residential, because that's captured a lot of the attention. The employment capacity that we show based on the county's model is that we do have an adequate land supply for employment. There is some, uh, there are finer points you can argue inside the aggregate total about, do we have enough of industrial or certain, for certain types of industrial, or do we have enough for, um, high-wage jobs versus retail and service sector jobs? But overall, we show based on the model that we do have enough employment land. The other comment I would make is that the land capacity model, um, for residential is fairly predictable and stable because we have zoning for each, you know, every, every zone in the city that can allow residential usually has a density associated with it, and there's so many, only so many ways that you can achieve that density with single-family or multifamily or mixed-use forms. Employment is, is a much broader kind of an application. You can have a commercial zone, and if you can imagine a, a phone call center for an insurance company or a telemarketing firm where you have people in ten-by-ten cubicles versus a research facility where maybe each employee is allocated, you know, a thousand square feet or a storage facility. So the, there's little, there's, there's control over the form and size of the construction done in, in different commercial zones, but there's little control or predictability over what actually lands in those kinds of buildings. So I guess what that's all saying is that the model is, um, the residential model is fairly stable. The, the employment model is very sensitive, so if you change your assumptions about jobs per square foot, that kind of thing for each kind of employment, you can swing the numbers pretty widely. That being said, the numbers we've chosen are pretty industry-standard and pretty middle-of-the-road, and so we're reasonably comfortable with those. And again, all things being equal, we feel like, we feel like we do have enough capacity to meet those projections.
And if I could follow up, um, clearly, just having the gross number of jobs does not address the issues Mr. Scott brought forward, and that is the quality of the jobs, whether we can get family wage jobs. I would refer, uh, Mr. Scott, to the economic element of our comprehensive plan that provides, uh, framework to try to encourage those kind of jobs. And it acknowledges in that element that job creation is, um, not exclusively nor even predominantly a government function. That's a private-sector function. Moving on to some other issues, as far as, uh, public participation, I will say that in many communities, um, the discussion of, um, the population allocation and range is a technical discussion, most communities. However, we've had opportunity to hear fairly, I think, a broad range of points of view and process to date. I will say that certainly staff and the city support public participation, meaningful participation. However, informed consent does not imply that we reach consensus on every issue. Unfortunately, we will have differences from time to time, and some people will feel their needs aren't met. Clearly, in exercising their role as government, elected government and appointed government, this body and the city council will act in what they believe is the best interest of the community. Nonetheless, we should strive to make sure we provide the broadest range of information, and we will. I would also say that, um, the bulk of participation typically, and is prescribed by GMA, is in the development of the policy base specifically, and in developing, uh, the plan itself. We've had good history with that. I imagine we'll continue it as we move forward. In terms of the population range, um, I think the fundamental difference is, you might ask, why didn't staff recommend the low range? Because the low range could be accommodated within the existing city. And staff's recommendation, as presented to you last week, had the mid-range but the same boundary. The reason for that was very clear, and we tried to enumerate it. If we go to the low range, um, which is twenty-three thousand, we have six thousand overcapacity. It puts our urban growth areas that are characterized by urban services that are currently developed at risk. The challenge could be that they should be removed. Removing them from staff's perspective is not in the public interest. Fundamentally, those areas are our services, our schools, people who work in our community, and ultimately, we need to crack the nut of bringing those prior-developed areas in. I don't have an answer for you on how to do that economically at this point in time. What I can say is, um, the alternative of adding wholesale to the urban growth area presents its own set of problems. I'd suggest strongly that adding areas without a plan to cover the cost of annexation defers that issue to down the road. Defers the issue and creates a false expectation for the potential of future annexation. I think many of you have been in this room when annexation requests have been brought forward. Contentious annexation congress. And I think you know that is an extraordinary, um, use of public time and resources. If there's not a possible way to crack the financial nut, how reasonably could we bring that forward, uh, for consideration? Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. Is there any other responses, staff? Okay, so, any questions from the planning commission, comments? You'd like to ask staff, or just discussion topics you'd like to raise? Garrett?
There's one quick question, um, regarding the difference between a reserve area and, and a UGA. From a planning perspective, when you look at an area that's, if it's placed into reserve, how much planning do you do for future growth within that area as, as compared to if it was actually in the UGA?
We absolutely do the planning work for areas that are in our UGA. We, we, our transportation plans, our park plans, all of those factor in areas that are in our current UGA. Reserves are a little different. They're, they're not in the UGA. We know that, um, if at some point in the future we need additional land to accommodate population growth, those are the first places that we'll look. So it's, it's a fairly significant distinction, I think. The advantage that we have, uh, with U Street is that it was in our UGA, and a lot of the planning work that would go on in that area has been done. So that, that is an advantage for U Street. But the distinction is pretty clear. You plan for areas that are in your city and in your UGA, and the reserves are just that. Those are areas that you might look at in the future if you decide that you need more land for urban development.
Thanks, Greg.
Steve, then Jeff?
Yeah, just a quick question. Now, in six years, we're going to revisit this process. Is that correct?
Actually, I think, I believe the GMA update cycle for comp plans is eight years now.
Eight years, and what will that review consist of? Will that be planning commission, city council, county council? Would that be a complete reserve, uh, review by all three of those bodies?
Yes, it would be the same process that we're doing now. So it would involve, yes, the city and the county.
So we would be able to start a recommendation in eight years to change or tweak whatever comes out of this, uh, body today or next week?
Yes.
Okay.
Jeff?
So I have a question about the, uh, the comp plan. It seems like a lot of our, well, not discussion yet, but a lot of our public comment, is a little bit of blowback from all the friction points in the comp plan. You know, what, what is the interaction between density and, uh, neighborhood character? And can you accommodate by infill or? you accommodate by infill or a single-family the way to go, and where's that single-family going, you know, what location is it going to be? But there's a lot of comp plan issues all tied up in this, and I'm kind of curious about, I realize that we're doing the UGA first, but there's a lot of comp plan discussion that's kind of circling in the room, yet we're not having that discussion, we're just trying to pick a UGA number. And I guess I'm a little worried about what the scope of the comp plan is, because I keep hearing that this is just a minor tweak. But to me, there's some major friction points in the comp plan that affect housing types and where growth goes and what it looks like. And I guess I'd like to get some idea from you how constrained the scope of the discussion is really going to be, because I keep hearing that, but I keep also having the feeling that there's a lot to discuss, and a lot of public involvement, and a lot of basic issues that still haven't been addressed for the new comp plan.
A very good question, and the things we quoted to you are the minimum requirements, not the maximum requirement. Cities can expand the scope of their review. However, in terms of framing the process, we anticipated, at least in our initial design, that this would be mostly confirmation and fine-tuning rather than wholesale change. Should the commission, and ultimately the council, find, based on what they hear from the public, that things have changed radically in certain areas, we really do need to address them. It is better for us to take the time to resolve those issues than to just say, for sake of expediency, we're moving forward. So our commitment is to get to that point of going through and saying, what's working? You know, what's changed? What's working? What's challenged? What are the new approaches we should consider? And that's the kind of work where, hopefully, when we resolve this very first, very preliminary stage, we move forward and look at.
Ellis?
In the course of the discussions we've had on this, I think that there were three key things that a number of people said independently, and that one of them, of course, is if we can stay out of the rural area and not sprawl, that would be nice. Affordability is a portion issue, and another one was keeping the character of the neighborhoods, and which was kind of nixing some of the infill thinking that we had. So my question becomes, and it appears that we have two developers or people who are looking, who would come into both the Kitec as well as the U Street space. This is not just hoping that somebody would come along. It seems like that there are people here who are quite interested in being involved in those places. It would seem to me that by including those two all or in portion would address these other issues. And now, maybe I'm making an incorrect linkage here, but with the more, it'd be more affordable because you're not, because the supply would go up, keeping out of the rural areas, and you're not infilling in somebody else's neighborhood. Am I making some wrong assumptions there?
Clearly, as heard from comments, it's a very complex issue, and there are key threads that have come through. Some of the threads are that there may be, some have asserted there's an inadequacy of land for a single-family, that the constraints that we talked about two weeks ago, when we showed the limitations on the city and its development patterns, preclude the creation of units, and infill has fairly challenged track record. We've had some good successes, but it's not been uniform across the way, and clearly, some concerns raised with validity from some neighborhoods about change. The question before the planning commission is, you know, at this point, what's the best way to solve that issue? Will revisions to the subdivision ordinance, for example, that allows planned yield, what the zoning says, through some flexibility of requirements, help meet some of that? Will other housing types where permitted meet some of that? The challenge on our single-family homes, or the areas proposed, would provide product, certainly, but, and provided at a relatively accessible point for many people here, clearly if the sales validate that. But it's a relatively short-term fix, in a sense. There's no more, there is no other place to expand. So I guess in a sense, there's two responses. The first is, it's complex, you might have more units go on, there's costs associated with them, you have to weigh whether those costs are worth the units provided. There was testimony on point, and our own presentation talked about the various costs. The second is, are there alternative ways we can find to achieve the same end that balances the neighborhood's desire for character but finds ways to provide it? Some would say, if it's not a single-family home, it's not going to work, and we're going to run out of that option at some point in the future. So I guess the answer is, it's not a precise science. I think you need to review these based on the information and suggest what's best from your perspective in the state's interest.
Garrett?
I think Mr. Setler just hit a very, very good point. We, I'm torn on this issue for a lot of reasons. Number one, I'm against sprawl, and when I look at the expansion of the UGA, it represents sprawl to me. However, the narrative that we get every time we look at infill development, any infill opportunities, is that it meets a lot of resistance. So we've effectively downzoned property in our city limits that could be developed. Fairhaven Highlands would be a good example of that. We downzone that, and as a community, we're accruing those costs and deferring those deficiencies that are in our system to a later date. We haven't been very passive on infill, so I have a hard time not recommending expansion of the UGA when there's not clear policy action from the planning department, from our community, to promote infill, and to make sure that if, we know that that's the most economic and sustainable way to grow, it's not happening. And why isn't it happening? We need a policy statement. Because I look at alternative B with the reserves, and to me, you know, that's where my inclinations lead, but without assurances, or at least a clear policy perspective from the planning department showing that we are going to achieve some higher levels of density and infill, how can, how is that consciousable?
If I might respond respectfully, your planning department has tried to advance infill for three years, four years, consistent with the comprehensive plan. They've tried to be consistent with what the policies are in your adopted plan and to do it. The challenge that comes up is infill intellectually, we all agree. It makes sense, it's less cost, it works better, but when it comes to our neighborhood, we're all emotional about it, and it's difficult to establish. Our best response after assessing a number of applications and tracking their performance, looking at the issues themselves, is we'll take what we can get in infill. We think that at this time, it may not be ripe for a significant effort. We do think that there are changes in the market, we hope to postpone them through actions, but I do believe the changes that have hit other communities will hit ours in terms of affordability, and alternative house types will become more sought-after. We have to wait for that to occur. We're looking at a twenty-year vision, and I think at this point, we have the patience and maturity to sort of facilitate what we can in the near term and keep our eye on the prize for the long term.
So I can just respond to the commission on that. You know, whichever way we recommend this evening, I think we need to keep that clear in our minds as we move through the subdivision ordinance and through the ADU ordinance and any other opportunity that presents infill, now that we've seen the numbers. Were numbers like this presented, you know, when we effectively downzone property within our city limits? Is the public aware of the costs that we're accruing and punting off to a later date? From a policy perspective, we need that, we need that information out there. That's my thoughts, thanks.
Jeff?
Well, I had a few comments to follow up on that, I don't think I'm really be surprised. I guess my overarching concerns here are the type and location of housing. You know, the UGA, the discussion we're having about the UGA expansion, the fact is, those are single-family homes, and they're car-dependent. You know, you're not going to trot on down U Street and just go to the coffee shop, the fact is, you're going to hop in your car. And, you know, I have a lot of concerns about that, because anecdotally, almost most, well, most of the people I know that have bought single-family houses have been moving in from the area for retirement, or, you know, they buy a three- or $400,000 house and it's not really an issue. It's one thing to plan for that and say, that's a good sort of thing, it's worth subsidizing by the rest of taxpayers, and let's, you know, there's a market for single-family houses, let's build them as fast as we can, because we can sell them, and that's a good thing. But I don't think so. I think we need to really look at the taxpayer costs, and we need to look at the housing types and the, who we're trying to deal with for growth. And I think there's a real problem with workforce housing in Bellingham right now. You know, the people that are making twenty-five or thirty-five thousand dollars a year, they don't really have a place to go, and I think probably more importantly, they're essentially locked out of the ladder of equity. You know, being able to come in, buy a condo, buy a townhome, buy something that's close to the town where they don't have a lot of transportation costs, and they can start building equity, and then they can move on and buy a single-family house later on. That whole avenue towards building equity and being involved in the community is getting cut off from people by failing to infill and failing to have more affordable houses. And I don't mean the technical term for affordable, I mean something that's a couple hundred thousand that, or a hundred ninety or a hundred eighty, that somebody actually has a chance to buy if they don't have a fairly high, in my opinion, family income. So the planning decisions that have been made over the past ten years, in part due to the neighborhood pressure, have basically created two classes, the people that have their single-family houses and are sitting fat and happy, and the other people that are locked out. And I don't think expanding the UGAs is going to deal with that issue, and that's one of those things in the comp plan that I'm very concerned about. So I think the housing types and who we're really trying to plan for here, and who, what population growth we're trying to actually have housing types for is actually the key issue. So anyway, I just want to build on that, and I also agree that, you know, I'm leaning towards option B, but I'd like to see the, a couple things added to that, and I guess when we get to the discussion of friendly amendments to the options, we can get to that. But that's my response, and I agree with Garrett.
Let's not have, please note clapping or any comments from the audience. I have a question and response to that. If, and this is not a clue into my position on your comments, I thought they were good comments, but if expanding UGA is not the solution to that, is not expanding UGA the solution to that? Because it seems like if we provide even less opportunity for that, you know, for that end result, someone who could buy maybe a small home, and you don't need twenty-five-hundred square feet, but something small in a, maybe a unique housing community, like an infill-type community, if we don't provide the land for that, how do we get there?
I think we have the land for some of that. There's King Mountain, there's Barclay, there's, we have a near-term window of the next five, eight years to see how much that develops and whether it's clustered or not. But the thing I'd point out is, I actually looked at the multiple listing, and I hear these comments about nobody wants to buy condos. I looked up what, say, if I wanted to buy something as a ladder, that low rung of the ladder to get in, I found student apartments for sale that parents might buy for their kids, up to a certain level, and then I found Fairhaven condos up three hundred K on up. I didn't find much that I would actually call workforce housing. So when people say there's no demand for this, there's no supply for this, and what's somebody going to do that wants to buy a place? So I think we have an opportunity here in the next few years to look at King Mountain, look at single-family, look at doing single-family efficiently without a lot of subsidy, and then also look at the other options that don't lock people out.
Yeah, I just support Jeff on some of his comments. I'm afraid, or worried, that Bellingham could possibly become like Aspen, where anybody who has a job doesn't live there. You effectively drive up the highway to go to work in Aspen. And I don't see that as a viable future for Bellingham.
Ellis?
Well, I don't see that as necessarily limiting the, what we'd be adding on for the urban growth areas then. I mean, that seems counterintuitive to me, but Jeff, maybe you can explain that.
Well, there's the, there's a taxpayer subsidy that goes into expanding that, and that's also leapfrogging. That's, you know, different people have different definitions of sprawl, but not being able to walk or bike effectively downtown, I think, is getting, when you're starting to concentrate people out there, you have to acknowledge that it's basically car-based satellite communities that are coming on, and that's expensive. It's expensive for the taxpayers to pay for that, and it's expensive for the people that live there to actually end up paying for services out there and then driving into town and driving to where their jobs are.
Chris?
Seems like part of the conversation that we would be having along those lines would be smart growth, right? Everyone, we want to think this out. So if we do expand the UGAs, then it seems like we would also include transportation that would support that in a smart way. I mean, I think we can look at Seattle and see that they did it backwards. People do want to live in the Northwest, people do want to live in Bellingham, people want to live here, and we, you know, we can try to say, don't come here, but people want to come here. So if, you know, we can play around with numbers all day on the, you know, population numbers, but we know people want to live here, and so we want to create, we want to live here. So we want to create a good community, and I think that's doing it smart and thinking it out. It seems to me that we would want to think, instead of going small, think big. Okay, if a lot of people came here, how would we want this to look? And, you know, if people want to live in the UGAs, how do we get them there in a smart way, in an efficient way, that doesn't mean they have to be in their car? That's what I'd like to see, like, how do we make that happen so people can live, maybe not right in the core, but it, in outside, you know, in a single-family home with trees, but they don't have to get in their car every day? You know, I feel like we need to broaden the conversation a little bit bigger in that way of how we have smart growth.
Steve?
Yeah, I, I don't think that we can bar one phase of any future target, whether it be the subdivisions, whether it be UGAs. I think it's going to be a coordinated effort. For us to say no to UGA growth and sacrifice those areas right now for low housing and concentrate on that and just within our city, I think that's short-sighted. I think we have the ability to continue forward and protecting every phase of this. I think we can do the low housing. I think we can make it work. That's, that's why we're here. We're going to do the, every process, subdivisions. For us to say no to one portion of this, I just, I do not agree with it. I, personally, I support alternative Charlie, C. I think we ought to move forward with expanding the UGA. I'm against, right now, I don't feel confident that we should start looking at U Street. I mean, that's seventy-two million dollars, that's a heck of a tax burden in twenty years projected down the road, and I'm very, very concerned about that. I'm concerned about every time we turn around, there's a tax, proposed tax increase. Well, it's only two cents on the dollar or whatever. You start adding these up from everybody in the, in the city, and you've got quite an increase. So I'm going to support alternative C. I think we should go forward with, with the Kitec South area. I think we should hold and reserve the U Street area, and I think we have an obligation to the city to work on the other phases, to bring along the low housing, and bring along every other phase that we can do to help grow the city in multiple directions and not just isolate it to one.
Jeff?
I just had a question for staff. I'm trying to remember how King Mountain settled out, but I guess where I'm trying to go is, is what, approximately how many single-family lots as currently zoned and as are likely to be able to be built, so excluding things that have critical areas problems? Do you have a sense of sort of what's in the city?
Yes, I think we know the supply by type.
Pardon me. The current... ...
Pardon me. The, the current first phase that's out there is, I think, 119 single-family lots that are at about 7,200 or six units per acre, 7,200 square foot lots. The overall zone out there, um, it's a residential multi-zone that has a range between 10 and 24 units per acre, depending on what kinds of bonus options or density options you qualify for or choose to participate in, like transparal development rights. The number that we have attached to the entire area, including that 119, is around 800 housing units total for that entire zone, um, which includes, it's, it's a, a couple of, uh, primary owners and then a, a few smaller owners around the edges.
Right, I didn't mean just King Mountain. I meant in the city, because there's been a fair amount of, um, conversation about, you know, once you get past critical areas or you get limiting factors, what's actually out there under current zoning? And also there's, the other question is, you know, if you look at the, the density of North Sunnyland, north of Alabama, you know, that's almost 10 units per acre, single-family housing. So you look at the acreage that's in the city right now, that's been annexed, that the city's committed to supporting infrastructure for, there's got to be 1,000 households, a couple thousand households?
So you're looking for the total unbuilt lots after we've deducted out all the constraints, which is our...
Yeah. I mean, just so we get a sense of what's already in the city that we're talking about for single-family.
So for, um, within the current, inside the city, not including the unincorporated urban growth area, inside the city, we're including, uh, counting capacity for, um, let's see here, I've got to subtract. It would be 4,353 single-family units is what we're counting inside the, as the additional capacity and the current city limits.
So at a build-out rate of 200 to 300 plus, maybe to 500, that's eight years' capacity already? Maybe? More? Maybe less?
If you, well, so what we would have done is if we stretched that over 20 years, that...
I'm not worried about 20 years. I'm worried until, until the next comp plan comes out. I'm just trying to get a sense for what's, see, that's the overhang I was talking about is there are lots in the city that are single-family.
But keep in mind, we're not tasked with planning for an eight-year window.
Oh, I know.
We're tasked for planning with a 20-year window, and so we have to look beyond what we're going to absorb with our current capacity. I mean, I get the train of thought, but we have to look beyond that, Rick.
If I might, as a process issue, we're not asking for your decision tonight on what recommendation. We're asking what you'd like to take to hearing so we could do more detailed analysis, present it. The public has a chance to digest it and come back and help you arrive at that final conclusion. Um, as we mentioned earlier, it might be possible to take two alternatives, um, to a hearing and say, "These are the two we're considering." Um, if it's the planning commission's pleasure to take, for example, B and C to hearing, you'll hear the range of concerns and issues. Doesn't mean you're locked into B or C. Um, you can come up with your own combination or even go to D or E after that. But it would at least frame the discussion and allow us to, um, have that forum. And then after that, you would be in, in review and, and crafting your, your recommendation.
Thank you. Um, go ahead.
Are you looking for a motion?
Well, I, I was going to make a comment, but if you want to make a motion, go ahead. I can make a comment afterwards.
Well, I'm just wondering if that, at least you get something on the table and...
Technically, pursuant to Robert's rules, we should have a motion and a second, and then a discussion about that. This is effectively a roundtable, which is discouraged. Um, so if that's what someone wants to do, that's fine. I have a comment to make. I can wait to...
Go ahead, make the comment.
No, I can make it afterwards. Let's, let's, if there's a motion on the table.
Well, I'd like to make a motion to, um, proceed or accept the staff recommendation, option B. However, I would like to also, um, kick out the idea of possibly looking at triggers, trigger points at which additional areas we pulled into the UGA during the planning period, if that's technically, legally allowable.
Second?
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. The motion was to recommend that staff bring back option B, alternative B, uh, for consideration with further discussion about trigger points to consider additional UGA expansion. Um, do we have any discussion?
Is that feasible?
We do that anyway every eight years, right? I mean, that's, we'd be looking at it any year.
I think, I think the, uh, the direction might be, what is our, what is the plan to look at those areas that are within the UGA served by urban services that are not part of our city? What are, what, what's the strategy the city has to bring those in? And that would include those areas, excepting to the Kitec property, which is undeveloped at this point. So, I mean, we could, we could, um, look at that if you directed us to do so. And you can, as part of the comprehensive plan process, develop a, a mechanism, um, that you'd recommend for council to consider, that would say, when these warrants are reached, one would exercise it, or a strategy you'd want to pursue in Olympia.
Garrett?
I, I would just, uh, you know, comment that when we go forward with whatever alternative we pursue, that we look a more in-depth analysis into the existing UGA. What sort of land supply is there? What sort of housing units would be available to be built, should those areas be annexed? I think part of the challenge is when you're looking at these, um, we don't know the full context of what the existing UGA is. It, I mean, it's important to note that there are dedicated UGAs right now. Uh, what kind of capacity are there? And, and have a better analysis of that when we are making a final recommendation.
We have some of that info.
We, we do have all that detail and can bring that forward to you.
So, Phyllis, do you have a comment?
Well, I was just going to ask, um, if, it seems like we're leaving on, on option or alternative B. We're leaving out the South U Street Reserve. But isn't there already development there? I mean, in schools and infrastructure, and so are already in place?
There is some development there. What staff is suggesting is, if at the end of the day it remains in reserve, or if it's part of the UGA, in either case, the city, um, it's in the city's best interest, since our services are there, try to figure out a more equitable way to bring those in at some point in time. That's, that's the nut many cities are trying to crack now. We're not alone. Um, and we might, uh, appeal to AWC, the Association of Washington Cities, to help convene a group. We're all facing the same issue. Is there some relief we could get from Olympia?
Question. Could you put up the chart again with the three alternatives up on the wall?
Some of us don't have it. There's four.
There's four.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you could put that up again.
Can I make a comment? Um, I, I'm not, I'm not sure if I'm going to speak in favor of that motion. Um, and for me, I, I think that the comments that Garrett and Jeff and Seres and Steve just made in this little discussion were really great comments and hit on a key issue, which is that, um, I don't necessarily know if I necessarily agree, though. I think we have a lot of policy already in our comp plan that supports infill and creating affordable housing. Um, we're doing a lot of the talking already in our comp plan. I don't know if we're doing the walking as a community. And I know that's a cliche, but it's the truth. Our neighborhoods are opposed to infill generally. Um, you know, we, but we have language in our comp plan about incentivizing urban village development. We have language about creating a mix of housing types and affordability, and all those, those things are there. And we'll, we'll probably get into the details of refining them and maybe adding more to them as we get into this discussion over the next six months. But I feel like our comp plan is already set up to do that, and it's the community that's lagging behind the comp plan a little bit. And the reason I, I think we'll get there, and I think that we have these policies in place that will push us toward that ultimately. Like Mr. Seppler said, well, maybe, maybe it's not ripe in the neighborhoods yet. You know, maybe we can't, can't push that agenda. We have to have them realize it as things get more and more difficult, you know, and we are pushed further and further toward expansion. So I, I think that's going to come with time. For me, I have a conundrum, because I don't think U Street and Kitec have anything to do with that. I don't think, I mean, I asked Chris last week that, that the percentage that, you know, how much it would actually change our percentage shift if we took in Kitec and built it all out of single-family, and you said it was like 1% or something. It really doesn't have a dramatic impact on our long-term goal of trying to push all our growth into our city core, in our urban villages, in my opinion. So for me, my conundrum is more about, um, the other criteria, which is the urban service issue. And is it a wise decision for our community to continue to push off planning for these areas? Because I was here at council in 2007 when U Street, there was an attempt to annex U Street, and the financial numbers, I'm familiar with these sheets because they presented these, and it was about 30, I think it was 28 million. And here we are seven years later, and it's 40 million. So, and we, we're being told by everybody that these areas are going to come in, they're the next place we look. We put them in a reserve, we're going to look at them. So in my mind, my conundrum is, if we just put them in the reserve and we wait eight more years, and then we go, "Oh, shoot, we need that now." Well, now we're eight more years behind the ball planning for that cost, and that cost's not going to be 40 or 70, it's going to be 80 or 140. And is that a good thing for the community? And I guess that's my conundrum, is like, we did bad planning. We, we shouldn't have given all this development to the UGA. And now we have a council policy that stops that from happening, and we have more control. But how long do we put off that mistake, fixing that mistake? And if we put it off too long, does that create an even greater burden for our community financially? That's the conundrum I have. I totally agree with what you're saying about pushing the subdivision ordinance and the AD ordinance to try and facilitate greater density and pushing the policies that we have about infill. But I have a great concern about kind of just ignoring this problem that we've created for ourselves and just letting it get worse and worse, and then ultimately being at a point where we just can't take them in. They're like Geneva, or, and we just kick all these people out that live and work in our community, contribute to our tax base. So that's my biggest concern with going with alternative B. And just to cap that off, I know that's a long soliloquy, but I don't personally think that the reserves generate, you know, realistic, long-range planning for those areas. I mean, we, Greg told Garrett, you know, "We plan for the UGA. We don't plan for the UGA reserve." So I don't think it's fair to say a reserve. A reserve didn't exist until the last comp, the comp plan update that the county did. It was, it's a new concept in Waukesha County. There were no reserves prior to 2006 or '07. So for me, I'm a little bit skeptical about whether we're doing, uh, the right thing with that element. Um, and I guess that's just more a comment than anything. So Jeff?
Well, I should probably be more specific about what I had in mind with triggers. Um, and what, what I was thinking was that, let's say you pick a number that, say, if you get to the point where there's fewer than 1,000 household, single-family lots left in the city, uh, then at that point, you look at annexing those areas, which is actually fairly generous, because that's pulling those areas into the UGA, even though there are already other areas already in the UGA, and it's putting them all on the equal footing. They can go to the city council, and the city council can make the decisions based on the infrastructure and where they want to invest and what makes sense at the time. Because I don't have a crystal ball. I can't tell you when somebody goes to the city council in four years or in five and a half years, um, based on what's happened in the underlying city as far as development patterns, and based on the specific areas, what's going to make the most sense. And I don't, we can't make that decision. But I also feel for, I've heard and I understand, um, the, the case that's been brought forward for pulling those areas into the UGA, and I'm not willing to just say, "Oh, we'll put those out 20 years." I actually agree with you there. I think they should be lingering right there, right behind the other UGAs, ready to formally come in as a UGA, so the council will have a, have a lot of à la carte annexation areas that are possible, and make a decision based on the costs at the time that they are looking at annexing them. So I guess that the whole issue of what a trigger is, what it really means, I'm trying to create a situation where we're not just pushing that off in, into reserve 20-year sorts of thought, but it's, it's near-term, but we don't have to actually pull it in and fully, uh, consider it right now with the 4,500 single-family lots we already have in the city that haven't been built.
Greg, oh, Steve.
Yeah, I...
Sorry, Greg. I'm sorry. No, you go ahead, yeah.
Okay. Uh, again, I think everything that's been said supports alternative C. Uh, we have the capability of moving ahead with the, uh, growth management to bring in, to start bringing in housing that's ready to go, keep the reserve area in the South area, U Street, prime that ready if we need it. When, when you look at the available single-family housing in Bellingham, it's, it's kind of a misnomer. You don't have flatlands, and it's going to be an easy build. They're going to be expensive houses, and you're going to eliminate the chance for low-housing mix. Out in the north end, where you got the Kitec, you have that immediately, ready to go, a mix. Transportation will follow. They'll get in there. They're also talking about expanding that, uh, that Klein Kelly Road, expanding the sewer, getting more businesses in there along the Guide Meridian. It, it solves a lot of problems immediately by doing this, and we're, we're responding. We're doing what we should, and we can use either the higher, the medium growth figures in population to justify that. Uh, I, I just think that everything's been said can be said, C fits all the needs. And that's, that's what I really believe is the best, uh, best decision for us.
Steve, why wouldn't you go, why wouldn't you go for D?
Because that brings them both in. I think the, I think the U Street area is just too expensive right now. It's unfortunately a ton of deficiencies, a ton of them up there, and it's going to be very, very expensive. And we have a, a low-cost alternative to move forward with the north area. That's my main objection.
Phyllis?
What about, um, if we went with C with the trigger points in there for bringing in U Street?
Greg, when you had your, uh, last go-around with this, I believe that you had a, a brief foray into developing a annexation phasing plan, uh, for the city, for the existing UGA. It didn't include the reserve, of course, but what, what happened to that?
We have it.
You have it? So the ci, the city, is that a kind of a informal planning document? It's not really like a trigger document like Jeff's referring to, where there'd be like hard numbers? It's, it's just, we think these areas are going to take this long to be ready?
It's not a trigger document. It's, it's basically a document that, that looks at each of the geographical areas that are already in our UGA and identifies, um, the potential build-out and also the costs associated with the improvements that would be needed in each of those areas. And it prioritizes certain areas for annexation, primarily, um, areas that have developable land, which are, that's pretty much what we've annexed over the years, is the, is the areas with developable land. What's left in our UGAs now, as Rick mentioned, is mostly developed. The residential areas are already mostly developed.
So, um, I totally recognize the financial concern that you raise, and I guess I want to ask staff, I think it's a fair question to ask. If you think that an area like U Street ultimately should be in, and the costs are going to go up over time, what value is there in waiting? And I just, I want to get a planner's perspective on that, because I think that's a fair question to ask.
Well, at this point, we, we have no mechanism to, to cover any of the costs. In essence, there's nothing, um, like a, that would take 10 or 15 or 20% of it and reduce it. And, uh, the hope would be that, since we're not alone and other folks have that, um, we might find some device that could help us. Um, if, uh, folks, when they annexed, had to also agree to pick up 10%, even 10% of the deferred maintenance, that's 10% we wouldn't all have to pay. Um, I, I would hope for more, but again, I'm using that as an example. So that, that's the issue. And I understand that time does cost more money, and I understand there's always the risk that it might never come in, because we may never find the device to make it more feasible. The alternative is, uh, do you take, uh, you know, we've talked about this before. Do you exacerbate the circumstance we have now and expand the deficiency with the hope that we'll somehow overcome it? Or do we try to find a reasonable solution and revisit this in some short timeframe?
Do you think that the city would actively pursue some solutions in the absence of properties being in the UGA proper?
Um, I think it's, I think, uh, if the commission believes that's the appropriate course, it could be something you would put in the comp plan, and it would be a policy we wish to implement. Um, uh, your city is very dutiful about implementing things from the comprehensive plan. Um, and, and our work program stems from that largely. My sense is, uh, if that is the ask, you know, to, to work with other cities to try to find that remedy, um, I think we'll find willing allies. It's not going to get easier for folks, so we need to work together and we need to, uh, look at it more broadly.
Garrett?
I think, uh, one of the things that was really alarming to me was the, you know, looking at both these areas, if they were fully annexed, it doesn't change the complexion very much on the housing issue. And there's a tremendous amount of pressure on single-family housing. That's not going to change over the long-term...
That's not going to change over the long-term horizon. We are physically constrained in our growth areas by wetlands, water bodies. There needs to be a paradigm shift in how we look at housing. And the city has been ahead of the curve on that. However, our community hasn't taken the responsibility to support the actions as far as infill goes. We look at, we've made plans. We, we just did a waterfront redevelopment plan that calls for, you know, tremendous amount of capital and investment that's going to need to happen there. And, and the urban village work that we've done within the city, there's a tremendous amount of work that's already gone into that. That, that, that's where I struggle with, you know, five-hundred, eight-hundred housing units, doesn't change the complexion of the, the big picture. So I think we have a motion on the table. I'd like to call the question and, and put it to a vote.
On that, Seriste, do you have a comment? Okay. If there's no more discussion, Garrett's called the question. We'll have a vote on the motion. I'll just restate it. The motion was made by Jeff to recommend consideration at the public hearing of Alternative B with a discussion of trigger points that could be implemented to look at annexation of the two, one or.
Inclusion in the UGA.
Pardon me, I get, yeah. Inclusion in the UGA of, of one or, or both of the reserve areas. Is that fairly stated? Okay. So no more discussion, let's have a vote, all those in favor, seeing, how am I saying, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
I think that failed four to three.
Three to four.
That the right read? Heather? Yeah. It was four to three.
Show hands.
Should we do a show of hands, in favor? Opposed? Okay, so that motion failed, and we can continue discussion, we could have another motion. Steve?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to have staff bring additional information as asked for trigger points for Alternative B, and bring Alternative C back up to the Planning Commission to do a final review and recommendation for our public hearing.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion to second. The motion was to, I'm going to state that backwards, if that's okay, to recommend alternative, that staff bring Alternative C back for the hearing, but also provide an opportunity for discussion of this, this trigger point concept for UGA reserves and Alternative B. Okay. Is there any discussion of that motion?
Was there a second?
There was a second from Garrett, yeah. Any discussion? Steve, you want to speak to your motion?
No, I just support it. I, I think that Jeff had some good, good ideas. You've already heard my reason for supporting C. It already handles all the, basically the needs immediately. And I firmly support hearing more about those trigger points for, that Jeff has suggested.
Well, I think that that's a, a better recommendation to bring forward than Alternative B. I, I, I'm just going to, I just have to go on the record again and voice, I have, I have some concerns that we're going to be back here in eight years, and Kitec's going to be built out, and we're going to be talking about single-family housing in U Street, and the numbers are going to be a lot bigger, and we're all going to look silly. And so that's my concern for our community and the cost that that's going to, that's going to bring to the table, or the really tough decision. But that being said, I don't think there's support for that at this time, so I, I'm going to support your, your motion.
Mr. Chair, just a clarification on the motion, and for the maker of the motion. As I understand it, you're asking for, you're voting on Alternative C, but you want some additional information on triggers for conversion of areas that would be in a, a reserve? C has, maintains U in a reserve, and you'd want those trigger points for converting U Street to UGA. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, Ali, are you, are you suggesting that, okay, if you go with C, but you're, you're hesitant to go with D?
No, I, I'm comfortable with C. I just think that we might be not looking at the, the long-term impacts of, of some of these areas that we made mistakes in, that we probably should, should focus. I just, I don't know if I believe that we're going to find solutions if we don't put these areas in the UGA. That's just my opinion. You know, I think we're just going to continue to ignore them.
So should we have a conversation about D?
D, D then would seem a more logical, from your logic.
Well, yeah, there's a motion on the table, so I guess we'd have to, to, to vote on it. I mean, if there's any discussion, if you want to speak to this motion as to why you may or may not support it, I think that's relevant and germane, and you could do that. Jeff?
Well, I, I think we can discuss it a little bit in the context of the differences between C and D, and, and whether there should be a melding of the two as a friendly amendment. So I don't think it's necessarily outside of protocol to have that conversation, is it?
I agree. If someone wanted to make a motion to amend that, Steve's motion, that's totally acceptable. And it's also, I think, acceptable to talk about Alternative D in the context of whether or not you support C at this time. So if, you know, if you have comments about that, I think that's, that's appropriate.
Somebody needed to make the motion first, or can we just have a conversation?
Either or. You know, I think, depends how you present those comments. I get to decide, I guess.
Well, I'm not trying to be difficult, I've just, I, and, and my comment was actually in response to you. You know, the other point of future costs and present value is that the city in ten years may have a much larger economic base if the waterfront's in place and everything, and the, the burden on people per unit may actually be less, even though the capital cost of the infrastructure is higher. The tax load per valuation or per capita or whatever else for the rest of the city may be lower if there's enough development and infilling and economic growth in the meantime. So it's not a one-way street. Yes, costs increase, but the underlying economy may also increase and, and lower the burden. So I just, you know, it's kind of complicated, but.
I, I guess if we, if that occurs, and it's in the reserve, and we, then we have to wait for a comp plan update to bring it in, and then our economics have changed, but we're behind the eight ball, I guess is the theory, right? Whereas if it's in and you're planning for it, and then the economics change, hey, gravy train, you're ahead of the game, kind of thing, right? Because you've already been planning for the cost, and all of a sudden the cost gets lower.
I think we all agree, well, no, I can't say that. I agree that I don't think that there's necessarily benefit to holding both areas off for twenty years, and that was my, the comment on the trigger. The question is, once you include it in the UGA, it becomes part of your capital planning, and you're, you're taking that active step to integrating it. And all I'm doing is suggesting that the trigger be the decision point where the land supply declines enough so that you actually have to open the door to doing that. And that's the point at which you start the capital planning. So I just wanted to be clear, that's kind of where I was going in my head with that.
Sure. Okay, so was there discussion on Alternative D within this context?
I just had a question of staff. Question I asked before, but just to, to re-clarification. At what point does the city have to start allocating funds to something that we bring in to the UGA? Is it once it comes into the city, once people are applying for that, or, or from this day forward?
Well, we plan for our UGA, so we look for the moment it comes in, we start making plans for, for services. That's a planning function. But the actual physical improvements would be associated when it was annexed. So essentially, there would be a portion, all or a portion of it would apply for annexation using one of the methods available. If it came in, improvements would need to, based on deficiency, would be ranked, and if it was a high deficiency compared to others, it might occur sooner.
I think I'm going to change my opinion on how we handle this. I think if we want to have more discussion about this, we should have a motion to amend in a second. So I would ask if, if there is a motion. Okay, is there any more discussion on Alternative C? Or I should say, on the recommendation, that's the motion that Steve made? Okay, I think if there's not any more comment, Phyllis, do you have a comment?
No, I think what we need to do is, is vote this up or down, and then, and then see where that takes us.
Yeah, I don't want to push anybody, I'm just suggesting that, you know, we, we move through it in the, with the right procedure.
I guess I just, I'm trying to clarify with, with Alternative D, what the negative effects to the city and the community. I'm just still trying to wrap my brain around that one, so maybe we do just go forward like you're saying, and then.
Well, I think Rick made a good point, that we're not picking right now. So, I mean, if, if those questions come up after the public hearing, there's similar questions to Alternative C, because it's similar, I mean, different, but similar issues exist with that UGA expansion. So we probably have an opportunity to have that discussion, and if there's compelling issues, we could always change our mind in thirty days, or whenever this next hearing is. You think? Yeah, okay. So I think we should call the question on this. So the motion restated was to recommend that staff bring back Alternative C for the public hearing, but also provide additional feedback on what options might exist for looking at UGA reserve inclusion through triggering. Is it fairly stated?
Yes.
Okay. So no further discussion, let's have a vote, all those in favor, seeing if I was saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
No.
Tom?
Yeah.
That was a no. Okay. I believe that was four to three, failure. So we are left still discussing this. Is there any other motion to present to, to staff at this time? Okay. We haven't had this situation before. I think we, I think we should attempt to talk this out just a little bit more and try and come up with a recommendation to staff. I think it's only fair to provide some clear direction to the public to review, and also for staff to bring back to us, since we're going to have our public hearing. And again, remember that we're not voting on a final recommendation to council.
I think we're close, obviously.
We're close.
Right. I guess my concern is, I, you were very eloquent in everything you said, and I don't want to be short-sighted and wish that we were, you know, I feel like when you plan for something, and I'm, I'm going to use an analogy that's, doesn't really fit this, but if you're planning for a party, you want to plan for more people than less, so that you have enough food and drink for everyone. So I would rather have everyone be accounted for than not. So that's what I'm trying to, I don't want, I, I just want to be, you know, think a little bit bigger. And so that's why I'm stalling or trying to get to a place that we're in the same, on the same page.
Sure. Jeff?
So I guess the consequences of overplanning were touched on briefly, and maybe we can be reminded on what that is. But I guess what I would point out is, if there are consequences to doing that, and if you are pulling things into the city, and it changes the dynamic of how development works elsewhere, what's happened? And, and part of that is, you know, if interest rates go up to eight percent or nine percent, we're going to see a very different market than we have right now. We're in the crazy days of low-interest rates and a recovering economy, and my beef with the Alternative D was using, or, Alternative D, was using the mid-to-high population forecast, because I think that's overplanning. And I'm not so sure the public supports that, and I'm not sure that's, that's really a prudent thing to do at this point. So I think there're both, there're two sides to it, is, you know, overplanning has consequences too.
Phyllis?
Well, unless I misunderstood what was being said earlier, the, the growth forecast to the mid or high range, if we take C, it's really a dependent variable, not the independent variable. In other words, we don't choose the range, and then these other things come about. If we choose, for example, to bring in both South U Street and the Kitec, we don't then independently choose a number. It seems like that's driven by that choice, is that not right?
As, and I'll ask my colleagues to help. What we've got is, is we're working backwards from both. We had a range, we said, how can we best meet that range, and we crafted alternatives to do so. And then in some configurations, we had to modify, because you said it's midway between high and medium, because that configuration of land, the way it was arranged for getting the reserve and Kitec, just didn't fall neatly in that number. But we started by saying, at the low range, what can we accommodate, what are the risks? We presented that as pros and cons to you. At the mid-range, what can we accommodate, what are the risks? And worked out the alternatives. There is some mixing and matching, but I think we've really given you a fairly short list of your choices, based on our assessment of the available land you could look at.
Well, I typically don't like to make motions as chair, but I'm going to. And I'd like to make a motion that we ask staff to bring back both Alternative B and Alternative C for consideration.
Second.
Period. There's a second. If, if I could speak to that briefly, I will. It seems to me like Alternative B is this idea that we leave them outside the UGA, but we plan for them through triggering of some kind. And Alternative C is one step further toward getting some of this land in, as Steve mentioned, and, and maybe thinking about triggers for U Street. So I don't see that much gap between those two. And that motion recommendation, I should say, would allow staff to bring us feedback on the issue that Jeff raised regarding triggering, but also continue the discussion of, of bringing in some of these areas into the UGA. It narrows our range of discussion for staff's benefit and for the public's benefit, but it still hits both these options. I'm confused, someone voted against both. I don't know who it was, I wasn't paying that close of attention. And so, you know, but we have what appears to be a majority of people are interested in one or the other of those two. So that's my, my reasoning behind that motion. And I know that's not probably the level of detail that staff would desire, but, you know, it moves us forward with less, less hope than what we came here today with. So that's, that's my comment on that. And if there's any other comment, take it. Jeff?
I'd like to support that, and I'd like to ask that if staff can email out that annexation sequencing plan that was discussed, because I'd really like to get some insight into the thought behind the criteria used for annexing, and the general concepts, and how that might apply in the future or not apply. I think that would help me feel a different level of comfort, perhaps, with some of the conversations we're having.
Okay.
Can I add a quick comment?
You bet.
Going back to existing UGAs, you know, Dewey Valley's been one of the areas that I get conflicting reports on, whether people want to annex or whether they don't. Can you provide, you know, more detail on just sort of the zeitgeist of those areas? And that would be helpful, kind of predicting a reasonable outcome for the annexation of existing UGAs.
And that, that would be outside the scope of the motion necessarily, but just feedback you're looking for generally. Exactly. And, and I imagine that if anyone else has things like that, that were brought up, and we get back to you with a reasonable period of time before the, before the hearing, that you, we could ask questions and plan to get feedback on them. Okay, is there any discussion on that? Tom?
This is some placing an onerous burden on the staff, is it?
No, we, we would bring B and C. We would look at the analysis we've already done, we'll provide the record, we'll include in some of the concerns that have been raised, and try to find a summary to respond to them in relative to B and C. And should provide for a provocative meeting on the eleventh.
Yeah. Okay. Any other comments on that? Steve?
No, I'm going to support the motion, because basically it covers both the ideas that I wanted to include originally, so I'm going to support it.
Okay. With that, I think we should have a vote. So I'll restate it quickly. The motion is to direct staff to bring back discussion of Alternative C and Alternative B for our public hearing, June eleventh. All right. Let's have a vote, all those in favor, seeing if we're saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Seven zip, there we go. Is that clear? I mean, clear as mud.
Just a couple of things. If the commission is willing, we'd like to make sure, we want to get comments from the public on B and C, and be able to assess them and condense them so we could respond. We would like to establish a date about two weeks before for a deadline for that comment. Additional comment will come in, but we'll respond to it at the meeting.
I think that's reasonable.
Because we'd like to incorporate it in the report, but if it all came in, you know, one week before the meeting, we delay the staff report, and we'd be challenged, we didn't provide it to folks.
Sure. And, and people could probably comment on any range of the alternatives they believe is appropriate still. They should just know that what we've asked for feedback specifically on are those two alternatives.
Right, and our staff report, we address comments specific to B and C.
Exactly. Exactly. Okay, thank you. Okay, I think that's it. I really appreciate everyone's patience with this, staff, your patience with this, the members of the audience who still stayed through this. This is complex. We're not, you know, rushing through it, I don't think. And I feel like that was one of the better commission discussions we've had about a topic in a really long time. So I really appreciate that and everyone hanging out so late. And with that, we'll close the work session portion, and if everyone could just hang tight for just a minute, we're going to wrap up the meeting very quickly. And so with that, we'll move on to any old or new business, if there is any. Rick, Greg, anything? Nope. Okay. Phyllis, do you have a question?
Yes, just about calendar for our next, say, May and June meetings.
Oh, yeah, maybe Greg could speak to the meetings we're going to have between now and the 11th, just briefly.
If I'm understanding Heather's note correctly, June 4th, you have a work session on the critical areas ordinance, and then June 11th, this public hearing. Those are the only two dates in May and June that we have items.
So not the 14th and not the 21st?
No.
Okay.
To be fair, we're constrained when we do a public hearing. Our notice required us to change those dates.
Okay. Great, thank you. Okay, with, oh, Steve, yep.
Yeah, there was a comment that came in from the public about arranging city email addresses for the planning commission. I think I would support that. I don't know what the cost problem or if there is one, but I would appreciate your comments.
Oh, on receipt of that, I asked our IT department to look into that. So it's being investigated at this point. It seemed like a reasonable suggestion.
Thank you. I think there was general support from some of the planning, so appreciate looking into it. Okay, with that, we will adjourn the meeting. Thank you very much.